All right, we're live. So at this meeting, we call this meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilmember Lesser for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're able.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the special name, I'd like to introduce former Marine in Topeka, Joe Ledbetter, to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mike. Governing body. Well, at least I don't come when it's boring. Thank you for this opportunity. I was reminded of a verse this morning in Psalm 46. I'm just going to paraphrase it real quick for you. "God is our refuge and strength, always ready to help in times of trouble. So we will not fear, even though there are earthquakes or mountains crumbling in the sea. The Lord is with us; he is our fortress," if you'll join me in prayer. Thank you. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this night, this another opportunity for the citizens to meet and meet with their government. This is not allowed in most countries of the world where people actually can come forward and put their concerns on the record through our First Amendment of free speech. And, Lord, I just want to thank you for that, and may we never, ever lose those rights. Lord, tonight, I just pray for a great wisdom on His counsel, a spirit of discernment, a spirit of truth, that they will be wise at all times in what they hear and what they say, and that we will have a peaceful meeting, but not boring. I pray, Lord, that you will always be with our emergency personnel, both our firefighters and our police, that you will always give them wisdom, courage, and great knowledge in how they carry forth their duties, and that you will always protect them. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We now proceed with the roll call. Mayor DeLaEslay? Here. Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Alcala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have nine present.
Nine being present. All right, we move on. Now we move on to the non-action items. And before we have that opportunity, I would like to see if there's any council member that would like to make some opening remarks. Please, the only thing that I will ask is, please be brief, as we have 60 individuals, 63 individuals signed up for public comment. But I did want to see if anybody wanted to say a few words before. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I would also like to ask our Lord and Savior as well to watch over the poor and the oppressed, folks of color, and also to recognize the lands that we are on tonight, Aracal, Kikapu, Sioux, and Osage. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't particularly prepared, but just, I wanted to thank everybody. We have had tremendous input from advocates for people of color and for change in police reform and for the police. Every one of those three issues can be very emotional and very fiery, mixed together. They've been challenging, I think, for everyone to deal with. It has been comforting to me to hear that every single person we have heard from supports police and supports our police department. And I appreciate so much people coming forward after tonight. I look forward to sifting through the issues and seeing which ones even need any attention, and if so, charting a plan of action. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And echoing the sentiments of the peaceful demeanors outside, I just hope and pray that, like I requested this morning, that today we could all lean in and listen to the concerns of our community so that we can together, together start moving forward. City manager, unless anybody else? You're looking at me. I could see you today. City manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I will be brief. I will cover these items all in a row, and then at the end, if there are questions from a governing body, we'll take them. Our legal representation is also on Zoom, so if there are questions of a legal nature, they are available as well. So the first thing I'll say is simply that I provided copies in 2A of articles that were pulled from the Capital Journal regarding the conversations our city has been having on the issue of police and community relations since 2016. Obviously, it's not every article or every issue or every event or whatever that's been held, but it is a snapshot of things that have occurred. We're here, obviously, to continue to listen to that discuss and have that discussion. So the first area that I want to cover tonight is qualified immunity. Qualified immunity has been around since 1871, and all citizens were guaranteed their constitutional rights. So from that, what is qualified immunity? Qualified immunity balances two important interests: the need to hold government officials accountable when they exercise power irresponsibly, and the need to shield officials from harassment, distraction, and liability when they perform their duties reasonably. And that applies to all government officials. So qualified immunity is both Civil Rights Act and Qualified Immunity are part of the vast body of federal law that's occurred over time. The direct power to change Qualified Immunity lies with Congress. The Supreme Court can also change the direction of Qualified Immunity. The city cannot legislate change Qualified or change Qualified Immunity, and that's probably the most important point that I want to bring out as it relates to Qualified Immunity. Currently, the court judges the defendant's officer's actions objectively, using the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene without regard to underlying intent. Police officers are often forced to make split-second decisions in circumstances that are tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving. So that's what I would present to you related to Qualified Immunity, and the biggest thing being is the city cannot legislate a change to Qualified Immunity. The next area is the Public Employment Employer Employee Relations Act. This is the Kansas law regarding labor protections, and it is what governs us as we deal with our unions. It deals with conditions of employment, including salaries, wages, hours of work, vacation allowances, sick leave, holidays, grievance procedures, and overtime. And these items are discussed, and we meet and confer with each of our unions as we go through a process of bargaining to determine what agreements we will have between our employees and us as a city. In regards to our current FOP contract, it is in effect from January 1 of 2019 until December 31 of 2021. What that means is that neither party can unilaterally modify this contract during those dates. We will begin negotiations in the spring of 2021 on our next contract with the Fraternal Order of Police. Items to be considered for change will need to be done during those negotiations, and we will have a discussion prior to the beginning of those negotiations with the governing body to talk about the items that they may be interested in seeing changed. Management may establish some policies to maintain efficiency of governmental operations and may determine the methods, means, and personnel by which operations are to be carried on. Implementations of policies and how they affect officers' conditions of employment, however, may be subject to a meet and confer process. So even though they may not be in the contract, they are subject that we meet and we discuss them. So that is the basics of our labor law. The other area that I want to cover, which has been discussed a little bit previous council meetings, is the issue of our independent police auditor versus some are arguing for a citizen civilian oversight board. The two options, we currently already have our independent police auditor, and you see the things that they do and how they handle themselves. And it's basically, it's the idea that it's an independent person that is analyzing things that occur by the police department to make sure they're handled in a proper appropriate way, and a lot of times primarily looking at use-of-force incidents that occur in our community. The other option is the citizen review board. The biggest difference being is typically you'll have a staff person that will do some of the same research that the independent police auditor would do, but it's then presented to a group of citizens that then review that information to determine if actions were appropriate. So when you compare the two, both methods need hired staff, both have civilian oversight, both operate independent of the police department, both provide a higher level of transparency, but the IPA is one person doing the work versus the board that will involve more members of the community. IPA can typically complete investigations and move findings forward faster than a board based on the scheduling that would be required. The citizen review board will only be able to review a limited number of cases and require more extensive training than any organization that we currently have created that will review those cases. And there would probably be probably some slight additional cost if we were to go with a board versus the independent police auditor. So those are my prepared remarks. I told you I keep them quick, but those are items that have been brought up, and I wanted to make sure that we put some facts out there regarding them. There's a lot more information that I included in your packet related to the independent police auditor, citizen review board, and then the white papers that Legal did related to the labor contract, PIRA, and also Qualified Immunity. So I'll stand for questions.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions and comments. I understand that at the local level, Qualified Immunity is probably is a moot point, but I do want to say that having received some information that there might be some possibility to move state law in the direction with dealing with Qualified Immunity. And I know a number of organizations, including the NAACP, social justice organizations, look forward to that in this next session. And I know other states have been doing it as well. I don't profess to be an expert on it, but I do know that Qualified Immunity, not meaning to mess with collective bargaining rights of the FOP, salaries, vacation, steps, promotion, et cetera, but my understanding from people that are wanting police reform, especially in cases of deadly force, is that it's something that needs to be looked in into more deeply. Also with the, just real briefly, on the citizen or the independent police auditor, there are many in community that still do not believe that the auditor is truly independent. And I know that the NAACP, Topeka Center for Peace and Justice, have put forth some really hard work and proposals that they have put together. And I think that doing a lot of reading on independent review boards, there's a lot of possibilities of how we can get more transparency and how we can get citizen involvements, but there's also a downside to it in that they can become easily hijacked and lacking any kind of real push for that transparency and accountability that we're looking for in cases of excessive force. What I recall seeing from the independent police auditor is pages, a couple of pages with so many cases, and it was just like information was given, but there was no depth to it whatsoever. And that, to me, is very concerning, and I think that citizens, there are a number of citizens that are concerned as well. So that's all I have to say on that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I keep looking up there to make sure that nobody over there. Councilwoman Ortiz, I saw your hand. Was that a remark? No? Okay, making sure. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, I think that we will proceed with the open comment section. I will ask that everybody that comes to speak, I think that we have made it clear that we're going to allow for as many people as possible. We're not going to do extensions. And if you can, since we have 67 individuals signed up to speak, if we could start organizing people so that they could, like, we have one or two persons waiting. Okay, wonderful. All right. And then all the remarks, part of our decorum, the remarks are not to be made at any council member specifically. They are not to be remarks towards any other individual, and your remarks are just for your council to be here to listen to you. So at this point in time, we will start with a Zoom person. It would be Ms. Janice Crawley.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you, councilmember first and Madam Mayor. The reason that I'm trying to speak on today is I'm trying to ask about the civilian council review, the civilian council review board. The importance of that is so that it can be independent from the city as well. Yes, there will be people that do need to be paid, but if it is treated more so as a jury council, uh, council board, then it is more independent. People are picked at random. You're picking people up, the community, and they have no direct ties to whatever officer or other entity involved. There's no compromise, uh, in interest of conflict. Sorry. And the other thing that needn't be spoken on is there's too many unknowns when it comes to the paperwork and the loopholes inside the arrest demographics, the history of the unsolved homicides, and all that the city of Topeka is asking for is accountability. Nobody is anti-police. We just want accountability. We want police reform, and we would like for our police officers to come home just as much as we would like to come home. I do not want to fear that my brother will get shot just because he moved wrong. We could simply be complying and still get shot. No, TPD is not the same as in Wisconsin and other places, but they have still had cases that have not been resolved and cases that have not been treated unbiasedly. And that is the remaining of the time that I would like to give on that, speaking of my truth, my peace, as being a black civilian in America.
Thank you so much for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Chancellor Lammer. Okay. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Ron Gish.
Madam Mayor, city manager, councilmen and women, I do appreciate all the service that you guys give to this community. I know it's not easy to step up and do what you do every day, but I will say, one of the things that has been, has been mentioned is that our group has made threats. I do want to say to all of you that our group supports law enforcement, and if you've had threats, we condemn that. We don't condone it. And if, you know, same thing with the mural, those people pointing fingers. We don't condemn, I mean, we do condemn committing any kind of crime, and that's vandalism or whatever it might be. So I just want to get that out first. Okay? So I hope it wasn't someone in our group. If it was, if I had a name, they'd be out of the group. We're not a tightly organized group. It's just people on Facebook, like-minded, who believe that our law enforcement officers have one hell of a hard job out here on the street, pushing these cars down the street and the things that they endure daily, the things that they're called, when they're shot at, things that are thrown at them. I mean, they have a tough job. What I would ask anyone to do is please, please, if you don't understand what your law enforcement is about in this community, you have the opportunity to go to the Citizens Academy. And that's a long program, and you can find out all about your law enforcement, the inside, from the inside, and you can become even a volunteer, and you can help your police department in this community. So rather than bashing the law enforcement or putting on policies or different types of ordinances, which I find just crazy, that we would want to turn something that is a policy handled administratively into a crime, you're going to take a police officer and you're going to turn him into a criminal. That's absurd, and I just don't want to see that happen in this community. I think it will weaken our officers. I think it's going to hurt them. They're going to hesitate to respond. I was a field lieutenant before I retired in 2015. I can tell you that I saw times when the self-initiated activities of officers went down tremendously. And I watched it, and I'm like, you know, I don't know if I blame them. They're putting themselves out there. They're putting themselves in a situation where the community isn't seeming like they support them. And when the self-initiated activities of police officers go down, what that means is they're not stopping that suspicious person that's walking away from your house. They're not stopping the guy that's walking up to the bank. They're not stopping that car that just went speeding away from wherever, maybe a crime scene. And now, you know, I've heard you guys say that we're not defunding the police, and I appreciate that you, the budget. I know what the budget was this year, and I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you. And I think everyone should be thanking you. But I've also watched the bike unit. Where is it? We had an event. The bike unit used to be at every event. There were people, a unit, that went out and they targeted career criminals. What I'm seeing today is they're gone. Where's the gang unit? Is it four minutes?
One minute.
Okay. Where's the gang unit? They're gone. Do we still have gangs in Topeka? Where's the violent crime unit? Do we have violent crime? What in the heck are we doing? Our crime's going up, and we're getting rid of proactive policing. It doesn't make sense, folks, that you're getting rid of proactive policing programs because you feel that maybe it's targeting this group. But in the meantime, you have criminals who are running amok, and they can jump in their car and they got free, you know, it's like when I used to play kid as a kid at home base. You know, you're free. You get in your car, you're home free. Same thing now with this, you know, where they propose it's not shooting at cars. So if I'm in a truck and I'm about to go to a crowd of people and run over them, and there's a police officer there that knows with certainty that they're going to kill someone or cause serious bodily injury, the way that it was written by Eight Can't Wait, which is part of Campaign Zero, which is part of We the Protesters.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Would you like to wrap up?
I'll just wrap it up. And so, you know, what I'm telling you is, they wouldn't be able to shoot. But with, thank God, that this, this council and the FOP and the police department have amended that to allow exigent circumstances. It's very important.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Richard Johnson. Richard Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
How you doing? My name's Richard Johnson. I'm a 30-year veteran with Topeka Police Department, and I've been gone away for a while, but I'm back. I retired on September 11, 2001, and I thought my time coming into addressing things like this would end. It's just a few weeks away from 9/11, and I'm back here. I fought the ethanol plant. I was the president of that group that fought the ethanol plant being put in Shawnee County. We won, one of three counties that has won. I went after the Kansas Gas Company for illegally taxing over 700 customers for over 20 years. Mine was the last vote that got Brian Hill elected sheriff the first time. I found that out through the people who were during the voting. Well, I'm back up here, and I'm going to dig my guns up out of the ground, I guess, because I'm not very happy with what I've seen going on. The thing I want to look at is basically trust and social distancing, long before we had the coronavirus. Social distancing. How many people here have been to Citizens Police Academy? One? Two? How many do ride-alongs? How many of you done them on all three shifts? This is a part that we run into. The problem that we have in our community right now is we have a lack of social, we have a social distancing that has not allowed people to know the police department like it used to. I'm old school. I was the first sergeant to run the first bicycle unit in the state of Kansas. I had a team of 10 people, and we reduced the crime rate in central Topeka by 60%. And we did old school. Old school was going out, talking to the people in the community, and getting to know it. We stayed in those territories. We identified who the problems were. We had done, we made contact with every kind of person that we could. And a lot of times, that paid off because, obviously, we reduced the crime considerably. Right now, we run about 14 officers on the streets, second and third shift. That's one officer for about every 13,000 or 14,000 citizens in the city of Topeka. That's not right. You can have one huge car wreck, you can have homicide, you have crime scenes, and you can reduce it down to little and nothing, and that increases the risks for officers and a risk for citizens. And that's a problem that we have. We need to go back to old territories, old zones. We need to have those people in there so that those people can communicate with the people that they're in charge for, charged with. You know, it's not that difficult to do that, but we got to have the officers back on the street, and we don't have those officers there. And what I mean by that is, community policing is getting out and annoying these people, and we have great training in our academy. They do a good job, and they teach all these officers to do it, but they don't have a chance when you're running 36,000 calls a month. They're going from place to place, not territory, not staying in there. They're roaming all around, and that's social distancing, and that's the problem that we have. Michael Padilla, he's, he was my boss, and he can sit here and testify for the fact that what the unit did, and it was old-school policing, and we've gotten away with that. Technology has run things off. We look on computers. We do this type of stuff. But nothing beats pressing the flesh. And that's the part that I want to look at, because you look at the categories of knowing people with mental illness problems. If you work that territory, you know it, so you reduce some of those problems, and you can help them out. If you know a person who has a criminal issue that keeps going on, you want to talk about reducing stress. If I've had contact with you before...
Sir, your time has expired.
If I've had contact with you before, then that stress is reduced, and that's dropping it down. Sorry, I couldn't stay any longer.
Thank you for your comments.
I apologize, sir. This one. Sir? Oh. Looks like Walmart.
We studied. Next person, Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governing Body. My name is Joseph Ledbetter. I'm a local attorney, citizen, and a former Marine, as I said earlier. I have continued to speak up for my support for the Topeka Police Department at a number of the past several years of budgets, including this one. Defunding the police is, is not even an option to people like me, and I think 98%, and I say that seriously, I think 98% of the people in this city support very strongly our police department. I do believe that they're not perfect, just like I'm not perfect. I'm probably the least perfect person in this room. I do believe that sometimes adjustments can be made, but what I don't want to see is heavy-handed restraints placed on our police officers where they can't defend themselves, they can't defend fellow officers, and they can't defend citizens that are in great danger and harms way. Those kind of restraints are unacceptable to me. That's as acceptable as telling a Marine unit in Afghanistan they can't return fire when they're under fire and checking in with some JAG officer 8,000 miles away, "Can we please shoot back?" That's not going to happen with Marines. And I don't expect that kind of restraint ever on Marines, and I don't expect our local police to be put under such heavy restraints that they can't defend themselves. I know they're not Marines. I know it's not the same mission, but there is kind of a parallel there, that when you're under fire, the adrenaline is rolling, and you're going to do your training, and you're going to defend yourself, and you're going to defend your fellow officers and police and civilians that are in harms way. That's just the way it is. It's that way, or they're not a police force. One thing I've been very impressed is with the CIT unit. I don't see the timer. Okay, I see it. I think they do a great job of interacting with the mentally ill in this community, and I think that we need to understand the great improvements that have been made over the past few years by this police chief and by previous officers in that unit, that we have a great success rate that I'm told is being copied by other police units across the country because it's been so successful. across the country because it's been so successful. If the police are defunded, crime would absolutely escalate. We talked about gang units. I don't know about that. I'm not familiar with those types of units. I do know the gangs don't exist in High Crest anymore. I know they got run out by our police department five years ago and they've stayed gone. That doesn't mean crime doesn't happen, but it means that those hardened gangs are no longer there. And they were scary to the people over there. If you defund police, the first people that are hurt and harmed are the poor. They are the ones who react the first. They're the ones who told me as their president, when I was over there, my God, Joe, get the police over here. Do whatever you can, get the police on our side and help us. And they did. And they responded very swiftly and very, in a very organized manner. And they did a great job. I just want to end this by saying I do believe in our police department. I do back the blue. I do, not that I'm part of that organization, but I do believe in that thin blue line that protects our people from anarchy and chaos. That is actually real. And we don't want to see in Topeka what's happening in other major cities where police are defunded and the police forces are demoralized and feel like the citizens don't want them anymore. And now you're seeing burned-out retail sections and retail stores. And those are not gonna come back. So thank you for hearing me and enjoy the next 60 speakers.
Next person signs up to speak is via Zoom. It's Dawn Butterey.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Dawn, you can turn your video on as well if you would like.
Oh, turn my video on?
Yeah, if you like.
Okay. Okay. I'm Dawn Butterey and my husband Rick and I have talked extensively about this topic. And we want to say first that we are very proud of the Topeka Police Department for their community involvement and their responses to calls. We were really happy with the mostly peaceful demonstrations that took place in Topeka compared to other places around the country. We believe that that is a testament to the faith that our citizens have in our police force and in the community. According to an email I received from one of the council members, the resolutions that are being proposed or considered in response to Eight Can't Wait are guidelines that are already being followed by the police department. I listened to last week's meeting and it was stated that they were guidelines already in place. They just wanted them in the laws in case the chief of police changes. I believe that that, the proposal, the way I've seen it, is too restrictive in the definitions and it would be redundant and unnecessary since these guidelines are already there. We do believe that improvements can be made. We think every dollar spent training the police officers and money spent to address mental health and poverty issues in Topeka would all be well spent. We believe body cameras should be worn and turned on in all police interactions with the public and that cameras that are turned off should be considered tampering with evidence and disciplinary actions should be in place. We're worried about the no knock warrants. We believe especially at night, they're dangerous to the police, to innocent bystanders and to suspects who have not yet been proven guilty. And that that's a process that should be discontinued. We believe a citizen review board or an independent reviewer should take care of complaints against the police. Most of all, we just want to say that we believe the codes as they're presented are too restrictive. They're redundant. The police are already following these guidelines. We're proud of Topeka and of the Topeka Police Department. We see them building strong relationships in the community, in their interactions at neighborhood improvement association meetings. We've seen them at safe, safe street events. We've seen the relationships they build with the community and their interactions with them at the library. We don't believe that these codes as a quick reaction are a good response. It's a heavy-handed micromanagement of the police that isn't necessary or best for Topeka.
Thank you for your comments. The next person
Sorry.
I said, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The next person signs up to speak is Shalane Frederick.
Hello. I would just like to first of all say that we have all seen that there is a very radical agenda being pushed in our country right now. And it is an agenda that has caused nothing but death and destruction and chaos all over our nation. And there is absolutely no reason why we should willingly bring that here. No reason whatsoever. It's been said, oh, this isn't, we're not, you know, Portland, we're not wherever. Yeah, we're not. Because we don't tend to allow that kind of thing to come into our community. And I feel like there are people that are really pushing hard to bring this agenda, radical, left-wing kind of running our community, to a community. And starting with the police department, our police department, from what I understand, does a great job. If something's not broke, don't fix it. We have a lot of problems in this community. You can't even pay people to come. We live here. Do you know why? Our crime rate is extremely high. That's why people don't want to come here. And I'm telling you because I've talked to enough people. If you guys, and I don't care if you say defund, I don't care if you say relocate, I don't care how you address the finances of it. I don't care how you address, you know, how many officers we have on the streets, whatever. If you do anything stripping this police department of their ability to protect, that's their job. It's to protect. They're not social workers. They're not mental health people. Their job is to protect. And if you strip them of that job in any way, shape or form, number one, you're gonna have officers quit. You know, required immunity, oh, let's take that away from them. And I know that's not local. I don't even want to go there. But what I'm saying is if you strip them of their ability to protect and serve this community, they'll quit. If they quit, guess what happens? Crime goes up. Guess what happens? More people will leave this city. The rich will leave the city. The businesses will leave the city. And do you know what you're gonna be stuck with? You're gonna be stuck with, with people that just simply can't afford to go anywhere else. And that's not okay. Poor people will be stuck here because they can't leave. That's what's happened in Portland, Chicago, New York. It's happened all over the country. So we need to look at what's happened when these agendas come through. We need to look at what's happened, what's happened when these policies have been pushed onto police departments and into communities. And we need to understand that it doesn't work, number one, that it causes anarchy, number two, because lawlessness is trying to be brought into this land, number three. And the people of this community don't want it. We don't. We want our police department to protect and to serve. Yes, we need mental health here. But you know what? You can't send a bunch of social workers out. I have a son that's mentally ill that's on his way to prison, partly because of his mental illness. I get it. But you know what? He needs a place to go. There's no place to send him. You can send a whole bunch of money on putting people out and community people. And I'm not saying they're not doing a good job. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying, it doesn't work. Until you bring back a facility, until you have a place to put these people, there's no point. But let the police officers protect and serve. If that's my time, I'll
You still have a few seconds.
Okay, sorry. I don't know what else I want to say, so maybe I just need to walk off. But no, you know, I'm just really asking you guys not to look at these, these sweeping terms and these ideologies that for some reason are just being taught in all our colleges and everywhere and everybody's grabbing onto them and, oh, they're such great ideas. If they're such great ideas, look at the places that use them. They don't work. It's chaos. It's anarchy. It's scary. And I'm telling you, people like me and all the people I know, we're already talking about leaving. Just, I mean, it's reality. We'll move out to the country. We don't have to stay here. We'll go to Womiga. We'll go to, you know, small communities where we don't have to put up with this crap. But if that happens, this community and the poor people are the ones that are gonna suffer. And that's what breaks my heart. It's not me about me suffering because I'm fine. I can get out of here. But the people that are gonna be left here are gonna suffer. And that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Sawab Hazzin, SJ.
Hello, everyone. I just, I just want to come and just speak on, on my heart, on some different things. What I see is a whole lot of high emotions, misinformation, superstition. And people are so blindly dedicated to whatever set they claim like this is gang banging. And unfortunately, this is a lot of, you know, ex-police officers and different people who are looking at things as if, you know, I'm backing the blue. Even if this person got shot seven times in the back and we could have tackled him before he got to the car. I used to work in corrections. You have to take people down at different times. Everybody knew where he was headed. He was headed to get into his vehicle. And they waited until he opened the door. And then it's like, are they waiting to see if he's gonna reach for something or waiting so they can be justified because the people who backed the blue blindly, I'd be like, oh, you know, he's gonna get off on that one. We don't know what he had. We don't know what he was going for or anything like that when he should have been taken down. But what I'm saying is, and even on the other side, some people are so blindly backing Black Lives Matter. It doesn't matter what somebody does. You could be in a protest, somebody breaks a window, it's one of their people, and they turn a blind eye to it. Same thing with different police officers. A different police officer could do something while he's with his partner and it's overlooked, it's not reported. People gotta grow some balls and hold people accountable, you know? Because I'm, I'm really tired of it. When I see a man that was shot seven times and then the first thing I see pop up is, he should have followed the law. He should have followed the law. And me walking away from police officers, is that a death sentence? Topeka's not Baltimore. Topeka's not Chicago. We gotta quit comparing it to all these different places when we try to come up with some of these things. We have a lot of great things that are working on the police force. I personally have seen the changes that Chief Cochran has done. We have a freaking mural on our police station. We were the second city to have an SPCP. And talking about the SPCP, there's so many instant activists who have jumped out the woodwork since George Floyd and some other things have happened. They're trying to make changes without doing their due diligence. And I'm not even gonna get on the, the human resource thing because they've suffered enough with some things that have happened. So I'm not really gonna speak to some of those things that I disagree with. But I don't think some due diligence was done there on some of the different things that were suggested. But I want to talk about the SPCP. And we made a lot of changes. IPA was one of them. Now, what happens if, you know, start a citizens council or something like that where they can review stuff? They're not gonna see any tapes. They're not gonna see any tapes. There's gonna be like a board meeting, another board meeting where people sit around and a captain comes out and tells them some questionable things that may have happened. And they might look at that tape. But, but, you know, E. Colazo has access to this stuff, to where he can see it. He can go through it. He's an attorney. He's a Latino. He's all these different things. And we want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and get rid of stuff before we give it a chance. And that's BS. So what, what, what I want to say is
SJ, please, please don't use derogatory terms.
I'm sorry. It was an initial, it just means being stupid.
Please no derogatory terms.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. I won't do it again. But I will say this. People need to do their due diligence, quit comparing Topeka to places that it's not. We've got a lot of things that works right now that are great. We've got CIT, you know, we've got, Chief's got a committee. We've got the SPCP. And we need to give some things a chance before we decide to come in and make a name for ourselves and want to be a cowboy and shoot down everything before we even know about it and, and things like that. And people need to quit being loyal to a fault because if you're loyal to a fault, it's your fault.
Thank you for your comments. Melvin Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Manager and City Council. I guess the way I'm supposed to say it. We're all here basically because of the big lies that we see on our TV all the time. The news media is telling us that police are killing blacks across the nation and police are committing violence. Those are two big lies. Let me give you some facts. Murders in America in 2019 from the FBI and the DOJ, 90% are 2,600 were killed by black people. And only 234 were killed by white people. Poller posted on 6/4/20, whites killed by black, huge 81%. Whites killed by whites, 16%. Blacks killed by whites, only 2%. But wait for it. Blacks killed by blacks, enormous 90%. 2,600 souls. Fox News says people killed by the police in 2019, they were only nine blacks. That's all. And 19 whites. So far this year, only eight blacks have been killed by white policemen. 2015, Worston Post even admitted cops kill nearly as many whites as blacks. Did you know that a black policeman is 18 times more likely to be killed by a black man than for police to kill a black man? 18 times. Another lie that police are committing violence in our city. Yes, in Topeka, the murder rate is up already for 2019, but not by the police. During the recent May and June US riots, some 2,000 cops were assaulted and 14,000 cops were killed. Recent July 6th Gallup poll revealed 88% of whites, 83% of blacks, 83% of Hispanics and 73% of Asians want more police, not less, in their neighborhood. Also, 8/14, Rasmussen reported the raising of level of violence is very important to us voters. And that's why I'm here. After listener voters, the Wissau City Council increased their budget, as you guys did. And I'm glad to hear that. Did you know that the 2017 Urban Institute revealed the US budget spending for black welfare was 22% of the budget? Elementary, secondary was only 21%. Kansas, it's 51, sorry. Upper education, 10%. 10% for others. Highway, 6%. But police, only 4%. Remember, Black Lives Matter and Antifa want to defund the police, personally getting 4% of the budget and give it to the social welfare workers, getting already 22% of the national budget. Even New York City's 2020 budget, housing, homeless, health and youth, their social program, was $7.8 billion. Police were only getting $5.6 billion before they were defunded by $1 billion, as you know. The facts do not match the lies that being put out by Antifa and Black Lives Matter and the fake news media. Give them one inch with these eight lives and the Topeka HRC-type handcuffs, they'll be back for the whole mile later on and we'll be like Milwaukee, Chicago, LA, New York, Seattle and Portland. Varvatus runs amok. And people want safer cities. Without our police, who are you gonna call?
Sir, your time has expired. Would you like to wrap up? Your time has expired.
Yes. I just got one more comment. Without our police, who are you gonna call? Ghostbusters?
We have, the next person signed up to speak is Sergeant Kenneth Nichols. Sergeant Nichols? Okay. No. Okay. So next person signed up to speak is Ivy LeGrown.
Hello. Do I need to tell you my name and where I, that I live in Topeka? Okay, all right. I just had a few remarks about some of the things that were talked about tonight and then I'll finish with some thoughts of my own. But on But on qualified immunity, every person who serves the public, including, you know, this board or this governing body as well, enjoys the protection of qualified immunity. I wouldn't support the removal of this from anybody who serves the public in general, particularly because qualified immunity already clearly allows for the prosecution of someone who willfully or with intent harms another person or does something in their job that harms someone. So there's really no need for it to be removed to ensure law enforcement doesn't indiscriminately abuse their power because that's kind of already covered. Now, also, for a citizen review board, I have just a number of questions and concerns. It's my understanding that it's, that would be an appointed board, and I don't remember who appoints it. It's either the mayor or the manager. But I was wondering how that would be selected? And I know you're not answering questions tonight, but there's something to put forth that I have questions about, so you know. How would you ensure diversity of thought and opinion on that board? Would you use both the individual reviewer, the independent reviewer that you have now, and the board? And obviously, cost is an issue because right now budgets are tight, just period, across everywhere. So cost would be something that I would be very concerned with. I would probably not support the adoption of a citizen review board for specific reasons due to cost and redundancy. If we're already going to use the other individual who's been hired, then there's not really any reason to do that. We already have someone doing that job and an additional cost for redundancy would be silly. And I'm also concerned with the lack of accountability and transparency that could occur because this is not an elected board, this would be appointed. But also, it's been said, and these are my concluding remarks, it's been said that the TPD already currently implements and addresses most of the issues and concerns that kind of have been brought up and are generally thought about when you think about law enforcement right now. However, many of these things being brought forth seem to assume or insinuate that there is some sort of widespread problems within the Topeka Police Department. I feel that this is a disservice to our local law enforcement members who are not operating in a way that is an issue. It's been mentioned that currently we're doing a really great job. And I went to the SP, I don't know that-
SPCP.
Thank you. The other day. And there were several members who were talking about how we are really doing above and beyond in many ways. And so it seems that it would probably be more useful to address any individual incidents that occur and communicate our appreciation for and confidence in our police department and what they're doing so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Kane Davis. This is the next person signed up to speak. I don't see Kane. Oh, Zoom.
I don't see him on Zoom either, so I'm not sure.
Kane, are you there? Under another name?
There's one person who I couldn't tell who they are, but it's got anything similar to that, so I don't know.
That's Alonso. I mean, John.
That's John.
Can't help have glasses. He does. Okay, no, so Mr. Davis is not here. Pastor Greg Blant.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd first like to thank you for your service and dedication for what you do. We appreciate you. I'd like to thank Chief Cochran, our Chief of Police, and the brave men and women who patrol our streets every day to fight to keep us safe. I'm here briefly this evening to talk about the term "community policing," some of the things that we deal with every day, how we can be proactive instead of reactive here in our city of Topeka. As a citizen who's grown up in this community, I've had my fair share of views of law enforcement, both on the good side and some on the bad side. This year alone, we're faced with 19 homicides. Gun violence continues to run rampant through our city. And with recent events that are occurring, people of the community are not trusting of both our local officials and our local law enforcement when it comes to serving us and protecting us. When you hear the words "community policing," the first thing that comes to mind for me is relationship. I believe that if we had programs in place in our local community centers that allowed us to interact with our young people, with our law enforcement officers and other local officials, then we could help deter that fear. Now, I'm aware of some of the programs like the Explorers and the OK Program for Young Black Men, the PAL Leagues, but what about some of the other individuals, such as the young white men or the young women? If we're able to create community partnerships with the police department and even local businesses and corporations, then it's my belief that we can begin to make an impact on families and on crime. Chief Cochran has done great things to help make sure that community policing has been a good thing for us here in our city. However, it's my belief that if we all move forward together, the council, the community members, people from back the blue, if we all move forward together, then we'll be able to gather enough volunteers to step up and help aid this effort. We, as in a group of community members, have recently started knocking doors and using some of our own personal resources that we have as individuals to help various families in need in various communities. And when I tell you it's made a tremendous impact, it really has. When our elected, excuse me, I'm sorry. I want to be proud of the community and the city that I live in, the city where I'm raising my children. But unfortunately, hatred has become a beacon in our communities, so much that I'm sad sometimes to say that I'm a citizen of Topeka. When our elected officials are receiving death threats due to their stance and wanting to create a better Topeka, when our community mothers are crying, saying enough is enough, sometimes it does make me sad to say that I live in Topeka. I would like to implore all of you, whether you sit in a seat that you've been elected in, or whether you're wearing a badge, whether you back the blue or even scream Black Lives Matter, that if our neighbors don't start mattering to us and our community does not begin to step up for ourselves and create a better climate to live in, then we just have to be able to remove ourselves from that seat or remove ourselves from that job or remove ourselves even from the city because we first have to care about the community that we serve. If I can leave you with a thought, it would be a scripture from 1 John 4:20. Says, "If a man say I love God and hateth his brother, he is a liar; for he that loveth not his brother whom he has seen, how can he love God who he has not seen?" We all need to make a change. We need to make the change. Our change has to start with us making it together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Damon Walker.
Hello, my name is Damon Walker. And I am here to call for an end to qualified immunity. Qualified immunity is a way to shield police officers from violating civil rights. I believe that as a police officer, you should be held to a higher standard, not a lower standard than the average citizen. For me or any of my brothers and sisters in the street, ignorance of the law is no excuse. We will still be punished for a crime that we have committed. That same goes for any officer who wears a badge. I believe that it is their first duty to know what our civil rights are. And if you are allowed to claim that you didn't understand or did not know that you have violated a man's civil rights or a woman's civil rights, you shouldn't be allowed to wear a badge until you do. Not long ago, a Judge Reeves with the US District Court of Mississippi said the qualified immunity has served as a shield for police officers, protecting them from accountability. I'll say that again. Qualified immunity has served as a shield for police officers, protecting them from accountability. And if I can be held accountable for any wrongdoing that I do, then officers of the law should be held more so if their training is correct. We have seen in different cases Timothy Harris, Dominic White, recently Jacob Blake, who was just shot seven times in front of his children. Officers should not be allowed to say, oh, I'm sorry, I shot him in his back, but I didn't realize that was a violation of his civil rights. Officers shouldn't be allowed to shoot him in the back in the first place. That much being said. But if you remove qualified immunity and hold these police officers, hold each and every one of your officers accountable for their actions, then we decrease the possibilities of the Dominic Whites and the Timothy Harris's and the many, many more begun each and every We're not here to get rid of the police officers. That's not our mission. We're here to get you to do what you say that you are here to do, to serve and to protect. And when we feel as if you are not upholding that end, then how does that enable us to bridge a gap? When we feel that your officers will not be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law that they are sworn to uphold, then how are we able to place full trust that you will do your job? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Kane Davis is in Zoom now.
Oh, he is?
Yes. He was under a different name, I didn't know, but he got with us on Facebook, so he's here now.
Okay. Mr. Davis.
Good afternoon, good evening. How's everyone? I'd like to first just thank Madam Mayor and the council members for giving me this opportunity to speak for the council. And I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of any organization. I am not in support of creating any form of citizen oversight or advisory board. I think we really should concentrate on fixing what we think is not working as good as we would like it to work, that's in our city. And generally, the purpose of a citizen oversight or advisory board is to create a good working and productive relationship between our police and the community, which we can look, which can look very different depending upon what choices the city leadership make. My reasons for not supporting it varies, but I'd like to go over the one. TPD is not Chicago, New York, Wisconsin, or any other city. Let's look at our problems and concentrate on fixing the problems that we've identified, the problems that we think need to be helped. If we model our programs or commissions, boards, whatever, after other cities, it will not fix our problems. It would just bring division, it would create more problems, and we honestly will never fix our problems. Today, in Topeka, we actually have the most, I mean, the maximum citizen input that I've seen since I lived here. We have numerous organizations, and I'm going to name some, knowing I'm going to miss some, but I can't name them all. If you look at SPCP, you look at Strategic Leadership Academy, NAACP, JUMP, Citizens Academy, the Black Lives Matter, various religious leaders, Neighborhood Association, and yes, individuals like me who care. I've watched individuals and organizations over the last few months really engage our police officers, engage our city leaders about policing. So we have the maximum amount of citizen input we're going to get. If we select 10, 12, 20, 30 people on a committee, we're not going to get the level of citizen input we're getting today. We have independence, transparency, and accountability in our audit. He has no direct ties to the police department, which is why he was hired. He is more likely, more qualified than most of our citizens like me, who would have prided to be on a board or a committee. Selecting a committee or board will not guarantee any more independence than our audit. In fact, the auditor, his livelihood, his professional standing is very dependent upon him bringing to the table independent transparency and accountability. That is not the case with me as a citizen who choose to serve on a board. I think financially, a committee or board is not necessary, as I stated previously. Why would the city council place this burden on taxpayer? As a government entity, we are still facing a lot of uncertain financial uncertainty because of COVID-19. Adding a committee or a board, which is an expensive endeavor, is not the best, not in the best financial interest of our citizens. Why would we burden the city staff and other entities with another board that provides nothing that is not already being provided? Your staff will be tasked with providing a lot of administrative support, preparing-
Mr. Davis.
...this committee. In closing, I hope that you think about all the community engagement we've seen by numerous citizens and organizations, creating a board will create a chilling effect on this activity momentum you presently have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
We are sitting in a good place as a community. We have positive and productive things can happen-
Thanks, Mr. Davis.
...if you continue working with all the citizens instead of if you select people on a board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Joanna Marks.
All right. Hello, I'm Joanna Marks, and I am a sophomore at Watchburn University. And I very much appreciate this opportunity to speak here. And so I wanted to speak on the citizen review board, which was created in 2017 after the fatal shooting of Dominic White by Topeka Police. The purpose of this board is to improve oversight, transparency, and accountability, which is basically policing the police instead of allowing them to undergo their own investigations because it is natural for people to defend their friends and coworkers in situations like this. And so it's easy to get that swept under the rug. And although Dominic White was killed years ago, it is evident that we still need the citizen review board because just last year alone, Topeka Police utilized force 164 times, and that includes pointing guns, physical contact batons, pepper sprays, and other weapons. And this is a 42% increase since 2016. And just to say, the citizen review board is not an investigative unit, rather, it is a review board consisting of possible volunteers. And they will be assisting police on community outreach and encouraging dialogue between the members that are representative of the review board, the police department, as well as the black community and other marginalized communities, which will forge positive relations and allowing these communities to not fear for their lives when going out and interacting with police officers. And to not be confused with the IPA, the review board is obviously consisting of more members because the IPA would only have one elected representative, and that could cause bias, especially since it will be appointed by a city manager who also would have their own biases. And so, and taking on the structure from the Wichita Citizen Review Board, they would have an ethnically diverse group, and that group would have to undergo background checks, complete the Department Citizen Police Academy, as well as training in open meetings and open records law. And to many people here and just all over the United States who are arguing for go-back-to-blue, they are missing the entire point on defunding the police. It is not getting rid of the police force because I honestly do believe that police officers are very important, but if they were to listen instead of just ignoring just because of the color of our skin and intentionally refusing- and intentionally refusing to understand what we are trying to say, they would understand that it is actually very burdensome on the police, who, I think it was the third speaker who said, in Topeka, one police officer would be patrolling for about 13,000 people. So obviously, that is a very large weight to carry because they would have to, like, go out to homeless people, mentally ill people, drug overdoses, traffic, domestic violence, and violence all around. So this is looking to delegate, which the Citizen Review Board would be able to help with in taking the weight off of the police officers who would have to go through all of this strain. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is PJ Carter. I'm the president of Black Lives Matter. There's been, I don't understand why the agenda has been changed. I've heard the reasoning and the justification, but what has been most needed in this community right now is information and education. And the way that the agenda was formed, that appeared to be going to happen that evening. Like, folks need to know about what qualified immunity is and what the ask is for that. I mean, those things have been clear. It needs to be clear to give on the eight can't wait and how these are discussions that are coming to the table to adjust in a way that fits for our city. Like, in no way is BLM asking to break down, well, actually, we aren't. The system is trash. I mean, we saw that yesterday. I'm not saying that our department is trash. We're not saying that Topeka is trash. We're saying that the system in the nation is not working. It's actually working and serving the purpose that it's meant to do, which doesn't benefit our community at all. The voices that have spoken in opposition of that don't experience the experiences that the rest of these members of this community experience. So how can they weigh in on what's right and what's wrong or what's needed and what's not when they don't even have these experiences? Like, we need an ear. The voices are out there, the voices are speaking. And, but like, people need to know what's going on. People need to know what's happening. And this meeting is not serving that purpose. There should have been a discussion and dialogue for when people to come up and speak on those certain agendas, when they misspeak and be misinformed, that they could be, that could be rectified and they could be educated. Mr. Duncan, you could easily be like, "This is what I have to present on that." And in no way is this serving that purpose or endangering our officers. It's just certain communication that needs to be had, or else no one knows what's going on, and all they have is the fear tactics and slogans and things that are going on. Like, today, no one's been enlightened except for you guys, when the community needs to be enlightened because it's really tense out there. And like, this serves no purpose, like, I mean, for the community because we're still at square one. There were supposed to be steps taken today, and we backed out on that. And as our leadership, like, I feel like y'all backed out on the community. I don't know, it's a certain part of the community, it's a small percentage of the overall percentage, but like, we're still a part of this community. All we're asking for is to work towards feeling safe in our community, feeling protected and served by our department. There's steps taken, there's good intentions. But like, we need hard changes made where it's clear. There's no manipulating the system, there's no vague, undescribable way to not pinpoint certain things right or wrong. I'm asking, I mean, the cry and the ask is for preventative steps that this doesn't happen in Topeka again. And we're being met with how dangerous that is for the community, for us not to be killed. And take preventative steps for what happened yesterday not to happen in Topeka again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank each and every one of you. It's an honor to come for you again to speak on behalf of my community as a whole. Topeka is a pathfinder. We are a monumental movement in motion. And being a monumental movement in motion means that we can't look at what other cities are doing, other states are doing. But what we have to do is look at what we are doing. We have to perfect what we are doing and who we are and what we stand for. And as a city, we have done great things. We have encouraged, we have transformed, we have transcended any expectation that others have set before us. But as a member of Black Lives Matter, as a melanated woman in this community that is a mother, not only a mother, advocate, not only an advocate, but a member that serves in this community and is seeking and looking for change, I ask you to look at what it is that we could do different. The review board would be great for us. The reason why the community review board would be great for us is because it speaks to what our community sees and believes. It gives, not only does it give power to the community, it gives voice to the community. The community cannot complain about what's not happening because it's gonna be up to them to make something happen. Not only when we look at that, we all know, I've several times came in here and spoke about restorative justice. I've presented the name of Mike Butler, I presented the name of Vanessa Wesley, who have already done the practices with restorative in their city. There could be a system set up before we ever arrive at the police department or the criminal justice system, a system in place where we, as the community, could come together and hold our people, our citizens, our members, our family accountable for the wrongs that have been done. It would cost us less money to operate as a restorative community than it does for us to operate as a punitive community. It would save us money and allow us to interconnect with each other, building relationships. Today, when I walked up, after being called names, after being told that all lives matter until one of us fall dead, after these comments had been made to me, I walked up and there was three police officers that I was able to embrace and give hugs to, I went to school with, I've served with, I loved, I know children. But why is it that when an arrest happens and we connect with a uniform, we forget about humanity? Each of us have children. Each of us are a member, an effective member of this society. Each of us are a piece that when you connect together, it makes Topeka who we are. And if the people don't have voice, what value do we have here in our city? I understand that it may be that you don't feel what I feel or experience what I experience or being impacted the way that I impact it, but when I tell you I cry and I hurt, I need you to understand that it's real. When my children tell you about the experiences that they have, I need you to know that it's real. When you tell me that you hurt, I need to understand that it's real. Because if I understand it is real and if you understand that it's real and give voice to the change that I am longing for, that the children that are locked up in my lungs are longing for, then you give voice to the change, to the inspiration, to the empowerment, to the glory of the movement that Topeka is doing. We say Topeka United. We say Topeka is powerful. We say Topeka is change. We say Topeka is inspirational. Today, we gotta stand up and become the platform that is willing to train and develop others that come in contact with the greatness that is locked up in the loins of Topequans. We are not who we used to be, but we are moving forth to do something differently. Give voice to change.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to talk and support and many individuals that I know from the community that are here tonight, Black Topequans, many of them who have said what I would have said. I also wanted to speak because I'm a citizen of this community. I'm a mom, I'm raising kids here. I have a vested interest in what happens. And what it comes down to is that the community needs to be able to trust the police. People are afraid to call the police because they're more afraid of what might happen to them than the ideal that the police could come and help them with their issue. I'm sad and disappointed that this meeting is being viewed as an attack on the police when the same community relations you've been trying to build for years, those people are here and telling you what would make them feel safe. Right now, there are clauses and policy that can be used to excuse the behavior of bad officers. Right now, there are systems in place that lack transparency for the community. Right now, the community is asking you to rectify these things, and whether or not you ever form the community relationship that TPD wants to have with us will be a direct relation to how you respond to our citizens' demands at these meetings. And that's what I wanted to say here tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Senator Robert. Good evening, councilor. My name is Courtland Davis. I was asked and decided to speak to the council in regards to a Citizen Review Board, something that I feel, as well as a lot of other folks feel, is vital to protect people of color as well as our children. What I hear a lot about is, you know, the big cases. It's the cases you see all over the news, the deaths. But it's not just about that, it's also some of the smaller things. The Fourth Amendment, something that I think a lot of my brothers and sisters have experienced. Being treated as if you don't have the right to say no, that you have to consent to a search. I'm gonna be 100% honest with you. I was 23, 24 years old before I realized that that wasn't necessary, that I had the right to not do that or consent to that because the way it plays out, you're made to feel as though you don't have the option. With the review board, my hope is that we can look at these cases, case by case, and try to find some resolve. I think what we're lacking between the community and the powers that be is the understanding. You all have the numbers in front of you. You know the statistics. It's not just here, it's nationwide. And maybe Topeka isn't as bad as other places, but let's not say that things of this nature don't happen here. I think what we need is understanding. If we can build understanding through the council, through the Community Review Board, then we can start to build trust. Believe it or not, I saw these folks outside, and I would love nothing more than to say that I back the blue, and in a sense, I do. My kids play football with some of these officers' kids. I coached a couple teams in the PAL League. I mean, a lot of good men and women. But there are some elements that need to be addressed. And with what we have now, I just don't feel as though that's happening. At the end of the day, I watch my son with some of these coaches, and I wonder when he is gonna go from the cute little athletic kid to a victim. And that is hard to deal with. And that's not a conversation that anyone should have with their children. I don't know how many of you have that conversation with your son. Hey, if you're stopped, comply on every level. I don't know what to tell my son, especially, like I said, in regards to the Fourth Amendment. Because if he exercises that right and then it escalates, something bad could happen to him. And this is not, I mean, this is common knowledge. This is something we're seeing all across the country. I'm not anti-police at all. I believe their job is necessary, and I believe it's an extremely difficult job to do. I just ask that we take a look at this review board and maybe try to make some changes to it that'll help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Glenda Overstreet via Zoom.
Hello, I am on line. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm here representing various organizations that support inclusive and fairness in seeking police reform. Those organizations are, let me just show my video here. I think that's what you're asking. Those organizations are noted in the written packet that we provided to you. Specifically, I'm here to present recommendations on behalf of Mainstream Voices of Faith and its external partners. Mainstream Voices of Faith is an affiliated group of the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice, of which I serve as a board member. The center has an established relationship with law enforcement, many of the city officials, and the community of Topeka at large. The call for substantive action was brought on by the death of George Floyd in combination with so many other African-American people of color who have lost their lives through police encounters. Now, you might ask why that is if it was not here in Topeka. And that's because Topeka is not an island in itself touched by such encounters. It is imperative for us to look at and do what we can as urban citizens to assist in positive and meaningful communication and work towards changes and moving forward. Thus, we diligently worked over the last few months to collaborate with other organizations. And we have compared various elements of the H.R. 7120 bill, which is the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act, with the elements of our city policing standards. We reviewed law enforcement policies and procedures. We conducted Q and A meetings with police, the sheriff, CEPs, KPOS, which is a training and certification agency for law enforcement. We've met with representatives of the U.S. Marshals Office and the Department of Justice in order to better understand the positive and the challenges of law enforcement performance, training, certification, and contractual obligation with the FOP. Thus, this process, they ultimately related or actually resulted in the creation of three subcommittees that ultimately had three areas of responsibility. One was evaluation of the use of force, exploring alternatives for eliminating qualified immunity, and then looking at evaluating data collection and public accessibility for data. And in looking at that, there was a cascade thing of all of those priority areas that we examined that really told us there was a need to create a Citizen Review Board, that Citizen Review Board needed to have certain elements. It needs to be independent according to a city manager, not being just one person that is reviewing the process. I understand that the IPA has a lot of experience. That's not to say that individuals that would be a part of this board wouldn't have just as much of that experience. It needs to be funded. And I understand that there might be a concern about the lack of funding that might be available, which I am a firm believer, I have been working in the corporate world and the nonprofit world for a number of years, and we can put money where priorities are, quite frankly. Unless you have some authority. And so what we did is we looked at structures across the nation. We reviewed those and we put together provisions. And we came up with a draft ordinance for creating a Citizen Review Board. That draft ordinance has been provided to you in a package of information for you to look at and review.
Ms. Overstreet, your time has expired. Would you like to make a closing remark?
Yes, can I give maybe thirty seconds?
We have not allowed anybody to have extra time, so if you would like to make a final statement?
Okay. I would just say that there are additional recommendations that we have also put forth, and we would also look forward to you all reviewing that and engaging in more dialogue with us about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person to speak is Stephen Twemlow.
I'd like to thank the city council for allowing me to speak on this controversial but important topic facing our community. My name is Stephen Twemlow, and I've lived in Topeka for the last 47 years. I'm the owner and chief instructor of the School of Martial Meditative Arts, which was started by Dr. Stuart Twemlow in 1983. Our school has been heavily involved in many social issues facing Topeka, the capsule bullying program of USD 501. We've worked with many victims of hate groups in this- We've worked with many victims of hate groups in this town and projects involving improving our community. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren who live in our wonderful city, and I bring this up because I have a vested interest in our community. In the martial arts, it can take years of hands-on training to reach what I consider enough skill with to at least have a chance against someone who's trying to kill you. It amazes me when we cut budgets, which in turn cuts hands-on training, that we expect our police officers to deal with life and death situations with very minimal training. You do not develop the skill set, the correct body mechanics, the situational awareness, the intuition without extensive physical training. The police officer needs to de-escalate a dangerous situation by getting the violent offender to the ground quickly, eliminating their responses. Ongoing physical hands-on training will allow the officer to feel comfortable and confident in implementing these tactics, traditionally resulting in a positive outcome with the risk of a violent response dropping dramatically. With increased hands-on training and de-escalation tactics, the need to use dangerous techniques to achieve the same results, strangulation techniques, using the gun as a first result unless necessary, will decrease. One of the major problems in a stressful situation is the adrenaline factor. It is critical to deal with the negative effects, especially in situations involving conflict that can escalate quickly. As your blood pressure rises, your mental reasoning and body dexterity radically decreases. Extremely dangerous if you're a police officer. One of the key ways to combat this potentially devastating effect is lots of physical technical training taught by the best instructors you can find that teach reality, not theory-based. With an active training routine, the adrenaline response can be delayed and/or managed correctly. Studies have shown that passive teaching techniques, lecture reading, audio visuals, offer low levels of retention, about thirty percent, while hands-on training have a retention rate of seventy percent. The studies also suggest that a standard twenty hours is needed to learn a skill to be able to perform well enough for your own purposes. This is a minimal amount of time. This timeframe refers to training a skill set, not a general overview. Another component of police training that I think should be incorporated is, is teaching proven relaxation techniques. Uh, in conclusion, the Topeka Police Department has great trainers and effective system. They need, in my opinion, a lot more hands-on training, which in turn means more money to make this happen. This cannot happen at the expense of cutting or decreasing other equally important training modules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Joshua, Joshua Karimi.
It's hot out today. Shoot, I think y'all have like a cooling system in here? It's, it's pretty comfortable. All right, well, let me not, you know, waste my time. As a black boy biking on the broken streets of East Topeka, we ignored the cracks. When the officer fired into the back of the fleeing black man, we ignored that too. There's not really much you can do when that happens. What we couldn't get past was the blatant inequality surrounding us, standing right in front of us. It was here, now, and we had to deal with it. But justice present was danger and crime, and hopefully things that would go away in time. As... As a citizen of Topeka that has grown up here, it has been pretty apparent to most of us that there is a problem involving not just inequality generally, but also targeted violence from police over the many years that the city has been around in specific aspects. It feels as if you are far more likely to be called out of name, rough-handled, or yes, even shot by a police officer in a certain part of the town than in another part of the town. But when, as another man, this third speaker today brought up, what we also have to be aware of is crime, that there is a need to target certain communities in order to make sure that we're keeping the city safe on whole. And I agree with that idea. Um, in thi, in fact, I think inspired by our newest chief of police, I want to take that idea and run with it. What we do need is targeted preventative measures, but they should be grounded in proven academic literature that has been tried in other cities where we can know what the results will be before we go in completely blind. So, of course, to have this council's favorite conversation, let's talk about infrastructure for a moment. Um, there was a study done by Columbia and Harvard that examined infrastructure improvements, specifically clearing abandoned blocks and clearing abandoned buildings and replacing them with like neighborhood beautification programs in three major cities. They looked at over six thousand different counts of this happening. And what they found was, when this did occur, there was a fifty percent reduction in crime in the neighborhoods surrounding those places. Now, I think that this is evidence that we cannot ignore. It might be the momentum up until now to try to handle with policing in a specific way, but when we're presented with such a golden opportunity so close to our daily responsibilities, uh, we have to, fifty, perfect, we have to take these things seriously. Um, this can be able to help us find a way to make sure that crime, investing now can help us find a way to make sure that crime decreases in a real manner in the future. And I think COVID has taught us that we should take the opportunities that we have to invest in infrastructure in the moment before things get worse. I, I think that when you hear a good idea, you should steal it and take all the credit for it you can. I, I think that this is one of those ideas. I think that police reform acknowledge, means acknowledging not just the failures of current or prior police departments, but the intergovernmental failures that allow one half of the city to fall into disrepair. That might be something that it's easy to ignore when you don't live there, but as a community member, it resonates. I want to thank the mayor and the chief of police for putting this on. I want to thank the council members that I've met with up until now, and I look forward to the ones that I haven't spoken to yet.
Next person signs up to speak, Kalandra Speck. Oh, not here? Okay. Um, the next person is Danielle Twemlow.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Twemlow, and tonight I am representing as a volunteer for Moms Demand Action for Guns In America. We are a grassroots, nonpartisan movement fighting for public safety measures that protect people from gun violence and keep families safe. Our Topeka group has been active since two thousand seventeen. We are part of the Gun Violence Prevention Movement that includes mothers, others, and survivors of gun violence. We support the Second Amendment, but knows it goes hand-in-hand with common sense gun laws and culture of gun safety. This includes city gun violence, police violence, suicide, and other unintentional shootings. We stand by the numerous individuals and organizations that are here or submitted their statements insisting on system changes that will better serve our community. To simply not be racist isn't good enough. We must be anti-racist. To do so means we must take direct action to better serve communities of color. In order to swing the pendulum for more equity, we must be deliberate in our actions, which is why we request you to take the following into consideration. Solving the problem of police violence and its destructive impact on Black communities will take more than reforms aimed at reducing police shootings and holding officers accountable. It would also require the country to confront its history of racism and white supremacy and examine both the appropriate role of police in public safety and the scourge of gun violence in America. By the measures for discussion before the council today are reasonable actions for the city to take to ensure public safety, reduce shootings by police, encourage community trust, and make our neighborhoods safer. Law enforcement must be barred from using deadly force, except when absolutely necessary to prevent death or serious body harm, and only after exhausting other means. Research suggests that implementing specific use of force policies can save lives. One two thousand sixteen study of ninety-one large departments found adoption of use-of-force reform policies, exhaustion of other means prior to shooting, bans on chokeholds and strangle, strangleholds, use-of-force continuum, de-escalation, duty to intervene, restrictions on shootings at moving vehicles, and warning before shooting were associated with fewer people killed by police. Police misconduct must be subject to a clear and consistent scale for discipline. The civilian complaint process must be user-friendly, and the shootings and use-of-force complaints should be reviewed by internal police units that complete their work quickly and are transparent with the public about their findings. Misconduct should also be subject to review by external civilian boards with independent authority to investigate complaints and make findings, ideally empowered to issue subpoenas and make binding recommendations. Police officers who use excessive force should not be shielded from civil liability by qualified immunity. A judicial doctrine that makes it nearly impossible for civilians who are hurt or killed to obtain monetary damages after a constitutional violation has occurred. De-escalation, reducing officer bias, and making positive law enforcement community relationships through procedural justice, a top priority, are all efforts that should be made to improve our community policing. The best use-of-force policy reforms are those that reduce the perceived need to use force in the first place. When police engage in regular, meaningful community outreach and value efforts that support community trust, such as including the public in policy measures and rewarding techniques, that is a way that we call Twenty-First Century Policing Task Force as guardians of the community and not warriors patrolling it. Specific instruction that assists in the transformation of mindset and practices includes these de-escalation and procedural justice trainings. Agencies should expand their collaboration with social workers, clinicians, incredible messengers, and crisis response to avoid arrest and divert people out of the system where possible. I also want to remind everyone to go to ksvotes.org and make sure you're a registered voter in case your voice is not heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signs up to speak is online, and it's Carol Christensen.
I appreciate very much the opportunity to address you tonight via Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Carol Christensen. I am a Topeka resident uh since nineteen seventy-nine and have recently served as a facilitator of a Mainstream Voices of Faith Subcommittee that has learned about our Topeka Police Department and also studied best practices regarding data reporting and public access related to policing policies, data on law enforcement encounters, and camera videos. Uh, like, um, all members of the Mainstream Voices of Faith, I want to express our deep respect, gratitude, and appreciation for Chief Cochran, who visited uh with us several times. We appreciate his good heart and his leadership. Um, and we also appreciate the very, uh, the many women and men of the Topeka Police Department who serve so selflessly and honorably. Nevertheless, we do have some recommendations that we think, if implemented, will improve policing in Topeka and police and community relations. Uh, the recommendations of this Subcommittee, if implemented, will better enable police administrators, community leaders, and members of the public to identify problems, focus on areas in need of policy reform and further training, and track bias and trends. Implementation of these best practices will also do much to build transparency, accountability, justice in policing, and trust. Mainstream Voices of Faith makes seven recommendations regarding data reporting and public access related to police data collection and accessibility practices for reporting to the public. You should have them um in your packet. None of these recommendations involve defunding the police. Recommendation number one: Collect and publish demographic and enforcement data on all law enforcement encounters, including stops, searches, and traffic citations. Number two: Make law enforcement data and information publicly available and accessible online. Number three: Procure adequate systems to collect and store the data. Number four: Release information about critical events in a timely manner. And in this regard, we recommend that the Topeka Police Department work with community members, elected officials, local prosecutors, officer organizations, and crime victims representatives to review and revise, if necessary, policies regarding the release of information about critical incidents. Recommendation number five: Review and revise as needed policies regarding body-worn cameras with community input. Number six: Continue to strengthen and improve storage practices and systems to preserve the integrity of video footage. Number seven: Establish ordinance that specifies that law enforcement officers must not interfere with or discourage members of the public from taking their own videos of law enforcement encounters. We have, but in the interest of time, are not sharing tonight any suggested action items related to each recommendation. We hope to share them later as part of an ongoing community dialogue about police and community relations. Thank you so much for your consideration and service.
Thank you for your comments. Now, Mr. Bill Smallback.
Again, excuse my appearance. Just got off work again. I look the same as last week. Thank you very much. I've been a lifelong resident of Topeka, Bill Smallback, and thank you. Did you know the crime rate in Topeka is a hundred and twenty-five percent higher than national crime rate? Topeka violent crimes are fifty-nine percent higher than the national average. Your chance of being a victim of a crime in Topeka is one out of eighteen since the TPD has began removing their proactive units in the last two years. Things like gang units, bike units, and violent crime units, et cetera. For all intents and purposes, it weakens the police. The crime rate in Topeka has increased significantly with every category of three, according to the data put out by the KBI in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Already by the end of twenty twenty, July, we have two more homicides than last year. Something isn't working for the whole city, not just the demographic. In fact, according to every website I looked at, Topeka is only considered safer than two to seven percent of other American cities. Tonight, we're here to discuss police department reform, specifically in relation to police brutality. I can't find any statistics on police brutality in Topeka in the last two years. The mayor has assured us in the recent interviews that the eight can't wait items being presented for adoption as ordinance in Topeka have been mostly and already implemented in the last couple of years under current police chief. Why has the city crime increased since these have been adopted? As a lifelong resident in Topeka, I have real concern for issues that nine individuals who are elected by less than fifteen percent of the voting population have decided must be implemented, when those ideas have originated from national political activists under the banner of eight can't wait, through Campaign Zero, and Black Lives Matter. Why is our city council heeding the voice of national activists about our local community needs? These national activists have proven their unwillingness to follow the rule of law by burning, looting, pillaging, and even murdering in cities across our nation. Is this the best direction for addressing our local needs? The Topeka Black Lives Matter put out a list of demands on their social media website on August tenth. Is this the new protocol for change in Topeka now? Ask yourself, seriously, what kind of people make demands of elected officials? Can wounded groups now make demands of elected officials? Because if that's how it's going to work, I can think of a list of number of changes that groups would like to see. Is this how they should go about it? Should we start rioting, looting, and burning to get our elected officials' attentions and then present a list of demands? What kind of precedent is being set by this protocol from a national activist group? Topeka statistics indicate a serious crime problem in our city that appears to only be increasing under our current leadership. I can't find the statistics to prove a serious police brutality issue in Topeka. I'm not saying it's not there. I just can't find the numbers. If we're serious about making positive changes for our community, let's pull our entire community. The businesses are being robbed by shoplifters and pillagers. Homes are, and renters are being, uh, whose personal property is being stolen at extreme rates. Let's pull the law-abiding citizens and taxpaying citizens who are being harassed by police fishing expeditions for burnt-out headlights and correctional windshields and parking too close to a stop sign. Let's be inclusive instead of exclusive. And yes, let's talk about the racial injustices of our fellow Topeka citizens that they're facing. I've been on the Black Lives Matter social media website, and I believe they have some very serious concerns and needs. They should be addressed. But using the national vehicle of a people group that are highly trained, self-professed Marxists who they say things like, "If this country doesn't give us what we want, we're gonna burn it," and call for the murder of police. Again, ask yourself, what kind of people make demands and say "or else"? I speak for most Topequans. I think these are not values or the agenda that we want to represent in our city. Thank you very much.
The next person signs up to speak is Kami Landholm. The next person signed up to speak is Kami Landholm.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kami Landholm. I'm a resident of East Topeka, and I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts with you tonight about the decisions that you are attempting to make regarding the updating the policies for our police department. I'd like for you to keep in mind one simple thing. My thoughts tonight are coming from my heart. It's not a political agenda for me. I have reviewed several policies submitted to you from the various organizations that have assembled tonight, and the thought that keep coming to my mind is, why do these organizations think that they know anything about the inner workings of the police department, let alone have the necessary experience in law enforcement to know what changes need to be made? The attempt to radically change these policies is nothing more than someone's personal agenda to polarize this community. And if you've seen the turnout tonight with the Back the Blue rally, you will know that those of us that stand in support of our police department will not allow this to happen. As a citizen of this city, I ask that you, the members of this council, take the time necessary to do your research on your own to determine whether or not any policies need to be dramatically changed. You need to spend time with your rank-and-file members of the police department, not with just Chief Cochran, "You do a great job, sir," not with the brass of the organization, but with the people who have the boots on the street. Those are who you need to be talking to. I'm asking that you get your hands dirty, go on ride-alongs with them, ride with various, from the rookies to senior officers, make time to work a whole shift with them, ride with them for all three shifts. Don't spend an hour here or spend a couple hours there. Really dig in and get to know the rank-and-file members of our team. Work with them on a Friday night or a Saturday night when there's an uptick in crime. Be there when an officer gets a domestic call, a call for a domestic dispute, to see how he or she de-escalates this situation. Be there when a child is missing and the whole team of officers come together to find that child and bring them safely home. Or worse yet, they find that child beaten, raped, and deceased, and that officer has delivered the bad news to the parents. Be there when a man who suffers from delusional tendencies is armed and seeing strangers in his house. Go in with that officer and investigate that there is no one there to harm that man, and then watch the care and the love that those officers show him by helping him to calm down and understand no one is there to hurt him or his property. Be there when an officer has to make a split decision about how to apprehend a perpetrator that has harmed someone, and the officer still needs to help themselves, keep them safe, and anyone else that is connected that could be a victim to this crime. Be there by attending the Citizens Police Academy, sitting in those classrooms with the officers and the members of the community, learning about the different functions of the TPD. Be at the community events sponsored by TPD and talk to the citizens in attendance, get their opinions and how they value our police department. Be there for your officers and show them that you really care about them, the sacrifices they make and the sacrifices their family make to serve this city. Until you have spent good, effective time with these officers to learn what they do day-to-day, you really have no right to be making any policies that's going to change the city dramatically. You're responsible for the safety of these dedicated men and women, so give them the time they deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've been told that the next person is not here. So the next person is online, which is Shelby Friendbacher.
I hear a lot about defunding the police and whether or not cops are violent, but today I'm actually here to speak on things that are actually on the agenda. I am Shelby Friendbacher. I pronounce her she/her. I am a constituent in the 8th District, and I stand here before you today to express both my support for unions and my dissatisfaction for qualified immunity for police officers simultaneously. If time allows, I will also address my concerns about the independent police officer and the chokehold ordinance put forth by Councilwoman Duncan. One thing I feel needs to be made clear is that I, along with many I know advocating for abolishing qualified immunity here today, are not anti-union. Our desire is not to tear down the FOP and leave police officers without union protection. Unions as a whole offer many vital protections for those in our workforce. I stand behind ensuring that police officers in the city of Topeka get proper employment benefits, adequate work hours, good pay, and an avenue to address complaints against them in a way that makes them feel heard. If you watch closely, many of the same individuals speaking in favor of police reform are the same individuals that have stood both figuratively and literally with and for unions across Topeka. So hear me clear when I say we are not anti-union, but no other union so readily gives their members a license to kill so much as the qualified immunity offered to police officers. Imagine a world where other workers could shoot their client for walking in the door black and be protected. Would the people be enough for then? Then why, as we sit here today, are police officers allotted a protection for the criminal act of killing without cause? Let's talk about what it means to have qualified immunity. Qualified immunity applies when a government official is in the beginning of a civil lawsuit. For those declared that a police officer has violated their rights, it is often the first hurdle they have to jump in order to give the facts of their case and nothing be heard. It requires that the plaintiff or the one bringing the claim against the officer prove that the officer has notably violated clearly established statutory or constitutional law and rights. You'll hear people argue that if the person's rights were violated, then this step should be easy to prove, but that's not what the law requires. The law requires to be a clear precedent or previous case in the same district court for the same conduct with the same or extremely similar facts. If the first time your court, if this is the first time that your court has heard a case like yours, you don't get to a trial. If this is one small detail, you don't get to go to the juror, judge, or the jury. Qualified immunity is a bouncer at the doorway of the court, but rather than assuming that you've come here to speak to the court, they actually shield the officer inside and let you plead to get in. I want to address quickly about faith in the system and why an independent police officer is not adequate enough. The facts here that are not in the presentation today are this: The independent police officer works under the city manager. The independent police officer is a single individual. The IPA worked closely with many officers. The IPA reviewed 37 cases dealing with excess force last quarter, and the IPA did not find a single case of misconduct in the review. There is nothing about these facts that sit well with me or help me sleep at night. Counsel, I'm asking for transparency, and I'm asking for the end of qualified immunity.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Ariane Davis.
Okay, thank you all for having me here today. My name is Ariane Davis, and I'm a proud community member and a mother, and it's been a tough couple weeks. I am mentally exhausted of hearing, "Let's not bring national problems to Topeka." I feel like I missed something. Did everyone know that a retired officer was going to hunt down and murder Ahmaud Aubrey? Was everyone in the loop when cops busted down Breonna Taylor's door and murdered her while she was asleep? Did the police let everyone know they planned to refuse Eric Gardner and George Floyd the right to breathe? They did not. The murder of Elijah McLean because he was acting different is a warning that we need telling us that officers need more diversity training and social worker presence is imperative. Why would we wait for tragedies to come or to continue before we evaluate the ways we can close the loopholes to prevent officers from abusing their authority should the opportunity arise? Why would we not look for ways to improve the trust between communities and law enforcement? The hate, vitriol, and blatant racism that has spewed all over our city the last couple of weeks is all the proof we need that we must take action. Remember what appears to be popular is not always right. The angry mob rule should not sway your duty to create a fair and equitable system. The city talks about wanting to bring more people to Topeka to live by offering a monetary incentive, but we've got to look at where we're at today and what are we doing to bridge the gap between the community and the law enforcement. Company after company have used their platform to speak about police reforms such as Ben and Jerry's, IBM, Amazon, Microsoft, Lego, and AT&amp;T. Turn on a baseball game now and you see Black Lives Matter behind every pitcher's mound. Major League Baseball, the NBA, and the NFL have all brought these issues to the forefront. Our own governor, Laura Kelly, spoke out condemning the brutal assassination attempt of Jacob Blake, who was performing a good Samaritan intervention with his children in the car. He was gunned down and shot seven times while holding on the back of his shirt. Previously, we had a corporation built for moving here once before in our state when we had a governor who removed LGBTQIA protections from the workplace. We cannot wait and grow while the rest of the, or wait to grow while the rest of the country looks at changing these things and we stay behind. These changes we are lobbying for are not extreme. They are morally right, and they are what our country and community wants. When do you choose enough is enough? It is no longer enough for our local leaders to quote Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s speeches and spoken words if you are not going to fight for the civil rights of the people he chose to fight for and he died to protect. The call to action before you today is challenging yourself to evaluate your character and decide if you want to be on the right side of history. Your voice, your vote, I need everyone to go out and vote, register by October 13th, and please vote on November 3rd. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Wendy Branson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm a little nervous. I've never done anything like this before, but with the way that our society and all of the challenges our country faces, I felt moved that I needed to come forward and at least speak my piece, and I do appreciate you listening. I am very concerned with the way our country is going, and I'm very concerned, as a grandmother and a mother, that it can spill into our, well, actually, it's appalling that it's affecting our country, but especially as it moves closer to home possibly. As I've listened to everybody speak, there's obviously a lot of varying opinions, and we just need to, I feel the need that we come together as a country and as citizens to, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, to just take care of our police. I am here to support them. My big concern is that I think our country is reacting emotionally. We, I am a logical thinker. I like to think that I think about things and make decisions based off of logic. Trying to reform the police, I think that is an emotional response, and I think we need to look at it more logically. I do believe that the vast majority of our police officers are good people. They are here to protect us and to serve our community. In any instance, there is always bad apples, and I feel that we are trying to change the police when actually, if there are certain things that occur, such as George Floyd, we are all appalled at what we saw. That was excessive, it felt like, and it needs to be dealt with, investigated appropriately, and then dealt with. What I see with the movement to do this radical reform, I think that that doesn't serve a good purpose. If there are instances that happen, we need to deal with those specifically. We need to investigate them, and then we need to address them and take swift and appropriate consequences and punishment instead of just doing this radical reform. Just refer to my notes here a second. I do see that the criminals or alleged criminals are becoming more emboldened, and I feel very concerned that if we tie our police officers' hands, they know that they are limited on what they could do, and I think there is more resistance that occurs. And so I think that we need to have policies that allow our police officers to handle things appropriately when deemed necessary to help things from escalating. If we can manage those, deal with those specific incidents, I think we would be far better off than doing radical reforms. I appreciate you listening to me, and I just feel a concern for Topeka, for our country, futures of our children, the safety of our citizens, and I just think we need to think, again, logically, and I think Topeka, we need to be better than what I see our country being right now. So, thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Nicole Purse?
My name's Nicole Purse, and I'm here to speak on the terms of the, I'm against the qualified immunity, fair, want fair and equitable system, but earlier today, hearing the agenda being changed and everything is, I decided to come and do things a little different than what I intended. So, weapons. No weapon formed against me shall prosper. I believe this with all my heart, but to intimidate this, to inter, oops, excuse me, but to internalize this to the fulfillment, I must know the weapon from the start. Weapons are anything able to do harm to the body, to the mind, to the heart, or soul. Weapons are tricks of the enemy designed to keep me from being whole. Some days, the innocent of food is a weapon, rage, self-pity, envy. All soldiers and its troops lined up and ready for me to indulge and disarm it scoop by scoop. There are times when the weapons are an idea dressed up in sophistication's glory, teasing me with the perception of control as if in charge is the end of the story. Oh, beware of the weapon of self-esteem lurking in the shadows below, determined to float my spirits in midstream and my chin at an all-time low. Thank God the ugly scales are lifting layer by layer from our souls' eyes. His panels of armor are shifting to protect us from these weapons of disguise. Today, we were bamboozled earlier. We were left blinded and confused. I say to the community of Topeka, those know who I'm speaking to, who said you? who said you were not beautiful? Who claimed life would not be plentiful? Who haunted you with no chance to achieve? Who destined your job was to roll up your sleeve? Who do you think you're not? Who taught you your values to be tainted? Who led you to believe your joy was only painted? Who sought you out from within a crowd? Who compelled your words to be so loud? Who do you think you're not? You must have forgotten you're a child of the king. You must have forgotten he said you could sing. You must have forgotten your daily bread. You must have forgotten that you too sleep in a bed. Who do you think you're not? Don't recall the hope in his book. Don't you recall its promising outlook? Don't you recall he gave you a voice? Don't you recall you're endowed with free choice? And you still don't know who you are because you're confused. You're a retriever, a believer, a thriver, a survivor, a possessor of royalty. You're a conqueror, a healer, a masterpiece, a kneeler, a vessel of equality. We are a vessel of equality. You're one to be desired. You know what's required. A display of obedience, humility, tranquility, integrity, adjujance, wrapped with affection, there's no room for rejection. Stand up, Topeka. Let them hear your voice. Be proud of who you are and stand on what you believe in. Your voice will be heard and we will prevail because we do not want qualified immunity. We want fair and equitable systems because we would like radical change and reform.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up is Michael Bell and he's on Zoom.
Can you see me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Good evening. My name is Michael Bell. I live and am involved in Topeka. I have been an advocate for low-income people in neighborhoods and the equal rights of all Tepicans for the past 24 years. I am here tonight to give my support to efforts to discuss and proactively adopt reforms to local law enforcement. We are asked, we are asking a lot even for just having this meeting. Thank you. It was bound to draw out of the woodwork those who oppose any examination of local law enforcement. I've seen that before. As a member of the Topeka Human Relations Commission Board, from 2004 to 2009, we discussed racial profiling and bias-based policing at several of our meetings in 2009. I facilitated another THRC meeting on the topic in early 2010 and was an organizer of and panelist on the citywide meeting on the topic that was held at the downtown Ramada later that year. The fact that many of those issues have persisted for the decades since then, after also being present prior to those years, says a lot about the systemic nature of those issues as well as the need to finally implement reforms that address local law enforcement's excesses. These issues go back much further than George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Dominique White. And kudos to the 2020 THRC for making a contribution to these discussions, whether one agrees with all of its recommendations or not. The need for reforms not only manifests itself through the testimonies of residents, but also through the financial repercussions of law enforcement run amok. Detailed in a December 2017 KansasCity.com article that said Topeka has, quote, "paid out more than $400,000 in settlements related to police activity since 2010," unquote. Regarding how the Topeka Police Department relates to the city's residents, this year's changes to the successful Community Policing Division only worsen the relations between residents and the TPD in the city's poorest and most ethnically diverse neighborhoods. As an NIA president, I can tell you that going from a cop-on-the-beat perspective where both residents and the TPD became invested in one another to quarterly meetings and regional coverages only distances the TPD from the people it's supposed to serve at a time when those relationships should be made stronger. Earlier this year, Chief Cochrane indicated that he didn't plan to return to the old model. I think that's a mistake. I am disappointed but not surprised by those who completely discount the concerns raised about local law enforcement blindly align themselves with the blue line. Even Chief Cochrane has implemented changes to what he inherited. We only want to continue discussions to identify areas that can be improved and implement changes reflective of those discussions so that protect and serve actually means something for all Tepicans. I endorse mainstream voices of faith's recommendations regarding police reform. As MLK said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Hannah Hansen.
Did you say Hannah Schumacher?
No.
She said Hannah.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Hannah Hansen and I'm a citizen of Topeka, Kansas. As a non-black person at this meeting, I do not plan to speak in front of you long because I feel it is crucial that you hear and truly listen to every single black voice of this community tonight. With that being said, I do wish to bring some things to your attention or refresh this governing body's memory of concerns this community has been trying to address long before this point in time now. I feel the need to address these issues again with this governing body because along with not only myself speaking at city council and other community meetings in the past in regards to police accountability and reform, I see so many familiar faces and leaders in here tonight that were speaking out and addressing the same exact concerns to you years ago. But yet, no real accountability or outcomes have come from you all. And why is that? Because what we are talking about is a systemic problem with institutions that are built on racism. And if the city of Topeka is not willing to recognize and admit these truths, then what are you here for? Not only do you need to hold spaces for these hard conversations to happen like tonight, thank you, but you also need to follow up with real actions and steps moving forward where the black community has a real voice and say on these matters because it is their lives that are being targeted, hunted, and killed still to this day. I encourage this governing body to take a hard look at our community and ask yourself honestly if you have done everything in your power as a city official to work on police reform here in Topeka. Yes, we have our own problems in Topeka, but again, this is a systemic issue and we are no different than what is going on in Wisconsin, Louisiana, Minnesota, and anywhere else in America. The Black and Blue Rally right before this should remind you that Topeka is no different. The defacing of the George Floyd mural on Sixth and Brainerd should remind you that Topeka is no different. And I will never stop saying his name, Dominique White. His murder by TPD should have you all up at night knowing that Topeka has shown we are no different. An independent citizens review board, police reform specifically looking at and modifying policies on use of force and police training guidelines are very small demands from your community when we are talking about black lives being murdered at the hands of police in our criminal justice system. That's bare minimum of what you all could and should be doing. Listen and take what these leaders of our community have to say and use the power that you all have to make real, sustainable change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Spencer Crowell.
Hello. My name is Spencer Crowell. And by and large, I grew up here in Topeka. I did spend a large part of my adult life in Austin, Texas, primarily working on the issues of police brutality and citizen oversight. So I'm neither new to the city nor to this issue. I also have some personal experience with our local auditor. I can assure you that my lawyer was not happy that I am here tonight. I emailed you all about that last time. Independence, oversight, transparency, and accountability. That is what we need. And for a long time, people have been asking for this. For years, people have been saying we need an independent body that has the right to oversee what has happened, that has the ability to take a transparent view and to hold people accountable. And here we are today for, you know, however many years it's been. I kind of don't know where to go because this has been going on for so long. You all have been asked to provide these things to individuals and we are still here. The discussion about police unions, Article 16, Section 2 has to deal with human resources and the provisions under which police are held accountable for their own human resources issues. So why are we having debates about qualified immunity when the contract itself has a provision for grievances? I don't understand why we are having a discussion about whether citizens should be allowed to have oversight. This city has a lot of issues and if we would do something to provide citizens with empowerment, to allow them to have a say in their city, maybe people would take a little bit more initiative. This body has passed nice acronyms to go ahead and provide special funding and special deals for more service industry jobs and to fancy up retail markets. But where is the money for modernizing the infrastructure? For providing real jobs here for people to work that pay more than simply a poverty wage? For too long, people have been so dichotomized and so polarized by a variety of jargon. Let me say that I think that there needs to be some sort of neutral third party with the authority for the use of force that is able to intercede in active violent conflicts. But the majority of police calls are not active violent conflicts. They are investigations. They are follow-ups. They are things that come after the fact. Since we have been worried about people provide, you know, whether people are entrenching themselves in their ideals and their positions, we need to have citizen review board. We need to have oversight. There needs to be a method for citizens to actually hold cops accountable. And if we will hold, if we will provide higher standards, hold them to higher standards, provide better training, we will also effectively be able to reduce the number of guns and badges on the street. It should be clear that in America, there is no question. The goal is simply to militarize every single cop and put an armored vehicle at every intersection that we can do. But if America actually gives a damn about freedom, maybe we should do more creative things than just badges and guns. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Ashar Toyaz.
Good evening. My name is Ashar Toyaz, aka Ashar Misha. And I'm standing before you now. I've stood before you before. But right now, I'm standing before you as an artist in the community. I was able to work on the Brown v. Board mural and I was able to work on the High Chris mural on the basketball court. And I've also been a core artist on the Topeka Police Department mural. And that mural is called "Common Ground." It took me a long time to come up with my concept to work on the mural and I had a conversation with Chief Cochrane about that. And I said because of the history of the communication between or the relationship between the black community and the police department. And Chief Cochrane reminded me that even though the police wear uniforms, that they're still human and I acknowledge that also. And like I said, it took a while for me to come up with my concept and I finally came up with my concept. And so I'm standing here now asking you to think about what is on the mural, "Common Ground." Common ground is a basis of mutual interest or agreement. And one of the leaders in the community said to me, "It's easy to put paint on the wall." And I agree with that. It's easy to take paint and put it on the wall, but it really has to mean something. Common ground. So I asked you to think about all the citizens of Topeka. I asked you to consider what common ground looks like for all of Topeka, all of your citizens. I want to say this too. I didn't have this written out, but when I walked through the crowd, I got derogatory comments to me from Black the Blue People. I had nothing but smiles and waves for them. I just want to say that. And I want to say that this common ground can look like more community programs, preventative programs that will empower our children, our community. And what is common ground that can be found in police reform, programs investing in our youth, programs investing in preventative educational programs? When we talk about citizen review board, what does common ground look like? When we talk about qualified immunity, what does common ground look like? Police chief, city council, mayor, city manager, don't let that just be paint on the wall. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Erica Garcia-Bab and that is online.
Hi. First of all, thank you guys for doing this tonight. I know I've got limited time, so I'm going to get right into it. First of all, police reform is not anti-police. It's part of the work to create a more perfect union. It's the kind of work that legislators are doing every single day. On a quick note, when it comes to an independent police auditor, I have to say that every time I've ever answered to the same manager at my job, we've been considered colleagues or coworkers. And every time I've ever been audited at my job, it's been by a completely separate entity. Now, to those so passionately backing the blue, I just want to say to you that I think we have more in common than you might think. I see in here your passion. I see in here you doing everything you can to make sure your family members come home safe. If you, when you feel a threat for your family, you may do whatever it takes to make sure that they come home and I don't blame you one-fifth. So then you understand that I'm also willing to do everything I can to make sure my family is safe. Because Black Lives Matter don't just matter in my house. Black Lives Matter are my whole world. Black lives are the reason I would get up in the morning and black lives are the reason I smile every day. And black lives are the reason I'm alive today. People of color have been shot by police while sleeping, Breonna Taylor. Shot by police while playing hide-and-go-seek, Tatiana Jefferson. People of color have been shot by police while eating ice cream, Bollie Jean. People of color have been shot by police while complying, Belinda Castile. People of color have been shot by police while buying milk, Latasha Hardens. Look that one up, okay? People of color have been shot by police while kneeling, Shawn Monverosa. So, and with that said, this is a lot of innocent people, but even guilty criminals deserve their due and reward. And I'll tell you where blue lives and black lives differ. Now, this might be a little controversial, but I'm going to say it anyway. Blue lives can remove their uniform. Blue lives can go on vacation without their blue uniform. Blue lives can retire. Blue lives can do a lot of things differently without their blue uniform on. My husband and my son. My husband and my son are black twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And when any time that my, my husband isn't home on time, the minutes feel like hours. Earlier this summer, it was kinda funny, my, my husband shared a Facebook post saying what it was like living while black in this community. And it was interesting because people outside the black community were, were shocked at all the things he does every day for the sake of everybody else's security and feeling of being safe. But nobody in the black community was shocked. Now, to those who say they've had exceptional experiences with the police, I don't discount your experience, so please don't discount mine. Because I've had the police banging down my door while my stepdad, my stepdad's body was not even cold. So I ask you to hear everybody's voices. And finally, I have to say that the name that comes to mind for me often is Tamir Rice. Tamir Rice was a twelve-year-old little boy playing in the park with a toy gun. And he was shot by the police. So that tells me I had ten years at best to teach my son how to interact with a trained professional who was vowed to protect and serve. So if I've seen like there's a sense of urgency in my heart, it's because there is. Because as my son grows, the days feel like minutes, and I don't have time. Because I need him to understand a lot of things before he's twelve years old. This means I'm having this conversation with potentially an eight-year-old. And my son deserves to be innocent just as, just as long and this is often as every other kid on the playground. And I know it looks like you left one. If you feel like your voice isn't being heard, volunteer and get out of your commission. That would just be in the comment section.
Thank you for your comments. The next person to stand up to speak is Mr. Lisa Nguyen. Oh, next to her, go on. The next person to stand up to speak is Jake Murts. Jake Murts? No Angela either.
Hi.
It's hard to hear back here. The sound system's not real good. Especially even with my hearing aids. Sorry about this, I didn't take them off, but get them off. I'll definitely put them off. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the special city council meeting. Uh, my name is, uh, Jake Murts. And I've been residing in Topeka for over fifty years. Ever since I got out of college. The reason I'm here is relating, relating to the Human Relations Commission's policy recommendations. I had never read so one-sided document in my life. I do not believe any member on the commission even talked to a police department before it became public. I mean, when you write something down to state ban or eliminate something, there is always another side. The only item I agree with is the banning of chokeholds. The other items all have issues. I believe that all police officers should have, have police-issue tasers. Almost all the shootings across the United States could have been eliminated if the person would have stopped and followed police orders. If a policeman says stop, then stop them. If they don't stop, then the policeman could use a taser. That would have stopped, stopped the shooting in Wisconsin and a lot of other locations. I disagree with banning of no lock warrants. They had their place, and I would recommend that all pistols be holstered and only tasers be used. Until the suspect's gun appears. If a pistol is unholstered, it is meant to be fired. The write-ups that never shoot a person if they are running away. What if a suspect caused an auto accident and a person was killed and the suspect runs? And the officer is already at a disadvantage because of the extra weight they are carrying to chase a suspect. You do not know whether drugs or alcohol were involved in the, because the suspect ran away. They can't do any DUI testing. Low-income clients are crimes. Are you going to overlook them? Maybe running a red light should be overlooked. A crime is a crime. It's up to the courts to decide what the severity of the issue is, not the police department. When it started, started destroying the city, I want the police to use all available topics available. Maybe you're going to stop and you're going to go through a checklist of different scenarios that are involved in policing? I don't think so. Only a few of the items listed are not the police department, but are the court's assistant to handle. Maybe, maybe destruction of property should the courts have a hot price ticket, even garnish wages. I was looking at a reference, eight, yeah, wait, and then drill down for one city and found that they'd done only one item listed. There are numerous committees, committees that are involved in, in the police and the public. These items should be vetted with a committee that represents both sides of the picture. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. The next person to stand up to speak is Trinise Marshall.
Hello, you guys. My name is Trinise Marshall, and I'm currently a senior at Washburn University, and today I will be talking about police reforms. What is, oh, police reform? Police reforms were created to ensure that policing would become more effective, hold police officers accountable, and hold responsibility, responsibility to the needs of all members of society within a framework of democratic sector governance. Growing up, growing up black in America is learning that people will not like you because of your skin color. It is your parents giving you a lesson of what to do and what not to do when encountering the police. It is your heart skipping a beat when you see the ones who swore to serve and protect you and not knowing if one wrong move or word can trigger them. Police departments are known to be historically oppressive towards people of color. The first city, the first US city police department, which was located in New York, was the Slave Patrol. There are also many modern police forces that have directed oppression and violence towards black people like Jim Crow, especially in the South, and the war on drugs, which especially affects the low-income, low-income communities that has a large population of African-American people and crackdown on, crackdown on protests, which once again affects many black people protesting for the exact reason we are in here today. In my eyes, it's no reason to knell on a man's neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds, to shoot a father in the back seven times in front of his kids, to put someone in a chokehold and then administer ketamine without the knowledge of the victim's medical history. It is no need, no need to burst into the wrong home with a no-knock search warrant and shoot more than twenty rounds into their home while people like Matthew Bernard, James Holmes, Dylan Roof, Gregory and Travis McMichael, all who killed individuals and went to jail without incidents. What do all these individuals have in common? They were white. No matter what side you are on in America, we should all know that America has a problem when it comes to the law dealing with black people. We are deemed a threat or aggressive, so that is why many police officers use force. But what is so aggressive about us? Is it us begging for our lives? Us moving around because, us moving around because the force of somebody else's body is too much for our own body to handle? Police reforms can hold the bad cops responsible and help stop the spread of corruption and distrust in black and brown communities. It can also include diversity training that every person in the, in the academy will have to pass before graduating because good social skills and compassion is a good virtue for every cop to have. Also to teach, to teach individuals on how to de-escalate a situation before the loss of life occurs. Anything to stop the killing, the killings of innocent black men and women. So I leave you here with this today. No matter what you look like or where you're from, think about Ahmaud Arbery, Elijah McClain, Trayvon Martin, Sandra Bland, Emmett Till, and many others who have, were killed because their color, the color of their skin was seen as a threat. These are the names of someone's daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, cousins, nephews, nieces, aunts, and uncles who did not want to die and wanted, and wanted to fight to live. But their fight to live fell on deaf ears of a society that was put against them since the day they were born. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person is Champagne Lloyd, and that's on Zoom. Champagne, you're up.
Hello, everyone. On this matter of policing and police and community relations, I'm not gonna give any personal examples of when they went right or when they were wrong and were unfair. I will say I have been the recipient of the policing and bad policing. And depending on who you are, you actually claim the same thing. We've heard both sides, which is good. We need to acknowledge different experiences. I understand the reality of policing is different for different people groups. I'm not here to convince you mine and my people group is the only narrative and experience people have with the police. I'm not here to convince you that there is a problem. I know we have a problem. It is what it is. The very fact that we were having this meeting proves that. But I refuse to accept that because I'm here saying that makes me anti-police. I back the blue, and I am a black life that matters, I assure you. It's disrespectful to me and those of the shoulders I stand on to be criminalized and characterized as divisive because I want change and real conversations that lead to reform, which means to make changes in, in order to improve. Acknowledging we have work to do does not mean condemnation of the police. I support them fully, I love the chief. It's saying we need to work on practices that are negatively, negatively affecting certain people groups disproportionately. And I refuse to allow this issue to be minimized to a headline, a juicy news story, or the ammo used to shame, shade, or sideline all the voices that are working so hard to make good change. Denying it to demand you take a sign has no place in our community. To stand for justice and equality has no sign to say, to take. It is the sign itself. It is the unifier regardless of the political, social, or religious side you are on. We must remember and also be examples of showing how to work for the common good of our entire community. That's what good leadership and government is here for. Having a hard conversation that will actually lead somewhere, acting justly, solving issues together while having different social views and disagreeing on specifics will always be hard because we are different and we're seeing from different lenses, but not coming together, not allowing this process, as hard as it will be, to not take place because of an individual's party, fear of public opinion, or loss of individual group's support should not dictate to us as leaders that the work must be done, the changes need to be made. I don't care if you, you have the loudest voice in the room. Doesn't mean that you are the right voice. I refuse to accept that to agree with one means we have to disagree with the other, that means we're enemies. I refuse labels being thrown around because we want to be part of a solution to change our city, which will make a better world. That's the narrative I reject. It's played out, it has no place, and it's keeping us from progressing further. Division can only divide us as hard as we allow. It is not the driver of our narrative. We are. I hope you are willing to listen to all sides of the community and lead from that. Because if you do, we will find that all voices will be served. Yes, it's scary, yes, it's hard, yes, it's gonna be stuff we don't want to hear. But we are here to serve this community to the best of our abilities and include us all. Everybody wants safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person to sign up to speak is Hannah Schumacher, and she is also online.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, can you all hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today and for providing a venue for this critically important conversation. I'm Hannah Schumacher, and I'm a volunteer with Long Stew and Action for Guns, Sons, and America here in Topeka. This evening, I ask the following of you. Please continue to listen and engage with Tepicans from a variety of backgrounds and races. Think of your own lived interactions with law enforcement and how those may or may not differ from the interactions of others. As a white Tepican, my interactions with law enforcement have been mutually respectful and calm. Some of my fellow Tepicans have had opposite experiences. I believe them. Nationwide, ninety-five percent of civilian deaths caused by police are with a firearm. And black people are nearly three times as likely to be shot and killed by police as white, white people, excuse me. We have long heard from community leaders that it is essential that our law enforcement agencies have strong evidence-based policies to combat this disproportionate impact. Clear guardrails on when police may use force against civilians, ensuring police are held accountable when force is used, and prioritizing de-escalation, dignity, and respect. Groups and individuals are working together in our city toward long-term meaningful change that will positively impact many groups within our community, including our law enforcement. This includes the list of desired outcomes before we move for consideration today. Evaluate the use of force policy and procedures. The impact of qualified immunity is dangerous and problematic for citizens of Topeka. The council should create high standards of transparency and accountability for law enforcement. Create an independent citizens review board. Increase and enhance reporting and communication with the public. There is no one-size-fill-solution to any of these issues. The goal is to ensure public safety, build trust within our community, make our neighborhood safe, and reduce police shootings. These proposed changes will require ongoing work to help ensure justice and equity for all Tepicans. As elected officials representing Tepicans who are and aren't like yourself, I sincerely hope you will take a multiple, take the multiple offerings, different perspectives, and experiences into account. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person to sign up to speak is Chris Bush, and Chris is also online.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for having me, Mayor, and the members of the council, and all other Tepico leaders in attendance. I'll get started. I want you all to just put yourself in this story. Even if you are a homeowner, I want you to assume that your home loan with the bank is in the role of a landlord or a property manager. You contact the landlord or the property manager to check your home to see if an old friend who was at your home earlier to collect your belongings has left. You give the landlord or the property manager permission to enter your home. Now, this is an important fact to remember. You also are so generous enough, you lend them your key. When you arrive to your home, you did not expect that the landlord or the property manager to smash your windows or to fire so much tear gas into your home that saturated your possessions and made the house unlivable for two months. Or even fire tear gas canisters at such velocity that your walls and ceiling suffered extensive damage. All of this done by individuals you trusted to go and check if the person had left your home, in which was never there. Because of what was done, there was some sympathy for the city when they gave you only nine hundred dollars to cover your losses, plus a hotel room for three weeks. You had conversations with friends and family and colleagues to confirm this was not right and unconstitutional. So you seek professional advice to soothing individuals who leave to your home. However, when you do so, you are immediately informed that a federal appeals court determined that your lawsuit was dead on a right. I'll say that one more time. Your lawsuit was dead on a right, informing you that these individuals were protected under a housing bill and cannot be sued. In your lawsuit, two members of a three-judge panel determined that the landlord or the property manager who trashed your home are entitled to a housing protection clearance because there was no previous case specifically holding when you gave them, they gave them consent to enter your home. Now, what does this mean? In other words, these individuals that were responsible for making your home uninhabitable were shielded from liability because it was not clearly established at the time that such a wanted destruction of property violated the Fourth Amendment. Now, to prevail in your case, the court reasoned with you, saying, "You have to produce a bill binding precedent establishing a constitutional rule specific enough to avert these individuals, the landlord and the property manager, in this case, that the particular conduct was unlawful." As I close with my question, as I close my question to you, how does this make you feel? Think about it. Was this right? Is it right? Is it fair? Should the landlord or the property manager have the protection from being sued? Now, this story should have set off a warrant to you to ask yourself what can be done to prevent this from reoccurring and advancing to other unforeseen circumstances. This is a true story, however, I altered it from its original print, trying to shed some light on you to see if your personal feeling or incident would occur, how it makes you feel. This happened to a young lady by the name of Shanice West in Coblaw, Idaho, in 2014. Although the problem is, it was not the landlord or the property manager, it was the police. The article titled is "Why Police Can Violate Your Constitutional Rights and Suffer No Consequences" in Corbett by Ian Hillister, posted June 320. And I am closing right now with my last statement. The Corbett was qualified immunity and not a government official broad and not entirely charged protection against federal lawsuits. I want to thank you all again for giving me time speaking for you. Ladies.
Thank you. Davis Hammett.
Mayor, City Council. What is safety? Who's it for? What is accountability? Who's it for? What is justice? Who is it for? What is the Topeka Police Department? Who are they for? These are hard questions. Being honest about these questions probably makes you uncomfortable because it's a complicated topic with a complicated history. In 2014, I was at the Topeka Police Department in vigil for Corporal Jason Harwood, who was an officer murdered in the line of duty during a traffic stop. In 2017, I was at the Topeka Police Department in vigil for Dominique White, who was murdered by police in his neighborhood. What is the Topeka Police Department? Who are they for? When you don't hold police officers accountable, you insult police officers. How little do you think of police officers to believe they can't be responsible for their actions? How little do you think of police officers to believe that they can't do their job without chokeholds or military equipment? If police officers exist to protect and serve, why can't the city council create ordinances to make it so, to ensure that that is the case? You're the governing body. You make these ordinances. You decide the culture and the reality of the Topeka Police Department. How they act is a reflection of the ordinances and standards that you set. I'm asking for us to be honest about this, but most of all, I'm asking us to do something. The citizens' review board is something that has been discussed for probably closer to a decade now. I've worked with so many people here for about five years on this topic. I didn't even realize that we had a so-called independent auditor, and I mean no disrespect, but someone who comes from the department cannot be independent of the department. The whole point is to give people the power to feel like they can hold people with more power than them accountable. That is what this country is about. That is what this state and this city should be about. So I'm asking you to please not just let this be a forum where we all give impassioned speeches and everyone makes us feel good, and we have these complicated conversations, and they do nothing, like it's felt for, you know, closer to a decade now. I hope that we actually get some muscle and give muscle to people who are scared right now, scared of the muscle that is used against them or that they are conditioned to believe is used against them because of the culture we have set, because of the norms we have set, because of how we have conducted policing for so long. With that, I'll just close again by saying, what is safety? Who is it for? What is the Topeka Police Department? Who are they for? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Jessica Moore.
Hello, my name is Jessica Moore, and I am a resident of Topeka. I would like to thank the city council and Madam Mayor for taking the time to have this meeting and to hear our concerns. I believe we as Topequians need to do everything possible to be proactive in regards to police brutality and ending systemic racism versus reactive. That being said, I realize that we are very lucky in Topeka not to be going through some of the same violence that is happening throughout the country in the larger cities. I commend our police department for their service, but just because it hasn't happened here doesn't mean that it won't. The bare minimum for change should no longer be an option. I believe that defunding the police is the only way to create meaningful change. Policing is a crisis in and of itself. We can no longer throw money and resources at an institution that is broken and expect to get different results. Police do not need to be militarized in order to keep the peace in our community. Our city's budget illustrates where its priorities lie. It's time we divest in violent policing infrastructure and invest in strengthening our black and brown communities. We have to get to the root of the causes for crime in our local community. We need to put resources towards community-led solutions to safety, such as mental health resources, education, affordable housing, and public health approaches to violence prevention. Defund the police does not mean we want to eliminate all funding to keep our community safe and crime-free. We know how difficult a police officer's job is. No one is debating that. I want the safety for both of our officers as well as our black and brown citizens. But we should not fear the people who are meant to protect us. Our police do not have the trust of the black and brown communities. And regardless if a black or brown person is guilty of committing a crime, that does not mean they should get an automatic death sentence by the police. We should not live in a world where we shoot first and ask questions later. Before I end, I would like to pose a question to those who do not believe that police brutality and systemic racism exists and that radical change is not needed. I would ask that you look down at the color of your skin. Are you white? If the answer is yes, then how would you experience the racism that we speak of? Just because you don't experience something doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I urge those who have the power to create change to remember this when they are making decisions that affect the lives of black and brown people. We do not expect an overnight solution, but it is urgent that we start somewhere. I would like to remind everyone also that this should not be treated as a political issue. It is a humanity issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Kristen Littleton.
Hi, I'm Kristen. I'm from Topeka. I'm just gonna piggyback off Jessica. I want to say for my favorite six-year-old that she understands that all lives cannot matter until black lives matter. And if a six-year-old can understand that, then I think we all can too. I am not saying that we take money away from the police department. I am saying that we need to refocus our strategies and thoughts on how to train them in a way that maybe it isn't the gun first. So I am a teacher. I was a teacher. And we're always trained in trauma. I worked for 501 for four years, and we always are taught to prevent, be proactive, and de-escalate. I know they're children, but it works the same. So a lot of people that have trauma, sorry, I'm super nervous. A lot of people that have trauma do not, their brains do not function the way that a person like me, I don't have any trauma in my life. They don't function the same way. So we call their upstairs brain and their downstairs brain. So when you're in your upstairs brain, you are rational, you're functioning, you can think, you can make good choices. When you're in your downstairs brain, you are fight or flight. You're adrenaline pumping, you don't know what to do. So a lot of people in trauma, they're always consistently in that fight or flight. So they don't know how to make decisions. They don't know how to rationalize and make the good choice when someone has a gun in their face or they feel like they're gonna be in trouble. This stems, trauma happens with people in poverty, and a lot of people in poverty commit crimes. So to, I want the police to go through some of this training. I don't know, I guess I don't know if they do, but trauma training. It is a true, and tried and tested, and it makes, it works. My children, my students, they react better to me. They do not throw chairs at me. They don't try stabbing with scissors. They listen to what I have to say if I use those strategies that I've been trained with. It's called adverse childhood experience, an ACEs score. So my score is one, because my parents were divorced, that's it. So a lot of people in poverty have ACEs score over four. That means they are going to have mental health issues. They are going to have like high cholesterol and all kinds of different things just because they're from trauma. That cycle of trauma does not end unless they have a consistent, loving adult for five years. That means kindergarten to fourth grade, if you're in school. And so these people are, these children are, they are brought up in this cycle of trauma and poverty just to go and be and commit crimes. And then they're expected to be rational against a trained professional. They're expected to make good choices when they can't, they don't know how to because they've been raised in a way that they don't know how to react. So my suggestion would be to have training in trauma and to learn what ACE is, to take, we did a test where we stepped forward, for whatever reason, positive thing, stepped backward, and I was at the door of opportunity, and people that I worked with were all the way at the back. And it was devastating, and they still, and they still go through that trauma every day. It's not fixed. They're in a job now, but they overcame a lot of adversity and a lot of trials. So I implore you that this is tried and true and is tested, and there's so much study and research done on it. And I know lots of trainers that would love to help you do that, and I think it would be very beneficial to be trained in that way. I'm not saying take money away. I am saying maybe reallocate funds to some training in trauma. And that's it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Bill Welch.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bill Welch, and I'm a lifelong resident of Topeka and a concerned citizen. I oppose our government officials sworn to uphold our constitution, to protect our citizens and community, giving a forum to entertain ideas from groups like BLM that march down our streets chanting hateful and divisive slogans like, "What do we want? Dead cops." "When do we want it?" "Now." They state that what they want, they state that they want prisons and police forces abolished. These same people are destroying, defacing, and looting businesses, destroying livelihoods, threatening lives of innocent bystanders, attacking our police forces, burning down precincts, and inciting racism and division. No, this is not what we want. We want law enforcement to uphold law and order in our communities. We want adequate funding of our police force for them to be adequately equipped to put down such unlawful and anti-civil outbursts. We want a safe community where we do not have to worry about our family members or friends turning around the wrong corner, encountering one of these out-of-control mobs and getting attacked. This organization is Marxist by its own description. We are not a Marxist country. This organizations, this organization and others like it operate like terrorists, trying to control by fear and manipulation, using the accusation of racism against any opposition. The truth is, there's very few people that are seriously racist. Ending so-called racism from police is not their true goal. Their true goal is to dismantle our law and order so they can rebuild our country under a Marxist and communist design. Poverty is the number-one indicator of someone's likelihood to commit crime. Thus, that should be our true focus. Capitalism has proven to be the number-one way to lift people out of poverty and what our country was founded on, and why we are the most charitable nation in the world. The truth is that of all the police interactions with the public, of which there are nearly fifty-six million every year, only point zero zero three-nine percent, or two thousand and eight, interactions resulted in substantiated complaints in 2018. We are seven times more likely to be murdered, fifteen times more likely to be killed in an auto accident, and forty-two times more likely to be raped than to be killed by a police officer. It's also been shown that blacks are no less likely to be shot by a white cop than a black cop. Our police force already had policies in place to address discipline of bad cops, how to properly interact with the public to de-escalate situations, and on and on. We don't need input from Marxist groups with hidden agendas. We want law and order. We want proper funding and support and respect of our law enforcement personnel, and we want safety on our streets. Our police are meant to be enforcers, not babysitters. Thank you for the time to speak tonight, and God bless our law enforcement and our community.
Thank you for your comments. Next person is Pastor Carl Frazier, and he is on Zoom.
Good evening, members of the first elect, thank you for wanting, for Mayor and Chief and everyone, City Council, for having this meeting. I think that we are doing a good job, but I think we can do better. I think that if we want to look at law enforcement, where are some of the other cities that want to make things better? As an auditor, I, you know, people never, when I walked in, they never thought everything was wrong, but then everything was right. But when you look at it, do things, and make recommendations, compromise and try to make things where the improvement need to be done. I think no one perfect. We all can be improved, show some sign of improvement. Other things I think that we need to look at opportunities. I think that it should, you know, recruit more African-Americans. But I think that, you know, I remember when it was either my mom's side or either my dad's side. I had a sister I'd never seen before when I was thirteen. And the only reason I'm an accountant is because she let me come into her life. I saw what she had, I saw what she did, and I ended up being an accountant because her husband encouraged me to be a accountant. I think that we have to have more African-American police officers out there to encourage other young men, to encourage younger women to be police officers. We need to see things in all, we can, to do it. And so I think a lot of times we're not really seeing the population, but it's not only with the police department, but I think in other parts of the city too, that opportunities for improvement on job opportunities for African-Americans. And I think that, you know, the opportunity to recruit outside of the city, we got to know the funding and stuff that we can set aside for funding to bring more African-Americans into the city. I think that's very important. If we want to be a diverse city. I mean, it is, I saw a guy said, "When I walk into a place, first thing I look at is the African-Americans there." And people said, "I don't look at that." I look at that. And so I think if we want to be a better city, we have to make sure we improve on our diversity of bringing more African-Americans into the city. And God bless you, and I think the city is great. I love Topeka, but we all want Topeka to be better. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next person signed up to speak is Gary Weikenbaugh. Oh, not here. Okay. Matt Blasingame.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the governing body, and city staff. My name is Matt Blasingame. I'm the TPD Chief Steward for the Fraternal Order Police Lodge III here in Topeka. During the last several months, I've heard many names mentioned in these council chambers, but I've not heard the names of Jason Harwood, Jeff Atherton, Dave Gogan, Joey Belender, Jeff Howey, Tony Patterson, Marcus Hood, James Buffen, Clarence Shields, or Caswell Matthews. These officers gave their lives serving the citizens of Topeka. Last year, one hundred and twenty officers died in the line of duty. Forty-eight of those were killed by gunfire. Six of them died during ambush attacks. Year-to-date for 2020, there have been one hundred and eighty-seven officers shot and thirty officers killed, year-to-date this year. As of August tenth, there have been one hundred and ninety-five COVID-19 officer line of duty of duty deaths. I bring these names and numbers to your attention because we, as sworn officers, are public servants, not the public enemy. We understand there's been a push for biospace policing training, cultural competency training, and more de-escalation training. The FOP encourages and welcomes training of all types. However, right now, we are faced with reduced time in firearms training, defensive tactics trainings, scenario-based training, and other trainings needed to do our jobs effectively and safely. Because of this, any additional training required needs to supplement what we already receive, and not serve as a replacement. We under, we understand that often de-escalation, de-escalation is a necessity in law enforcement. It is something officers on the street have been using since the beginning of modern-day policing. Yet, this word is thrown around with the implication that it's the police who de-escalate a situation. While officers can make every effort to de-escalate a situation, cooperation and compliance is also required from the person we are having contact with. As officers, we have taken an oath to uphold the law, as part of that duty, we often come into contact with citizens in difficult situations. Maybe a person has just committed a traffic infraction, or broken a law. Maybe an individual has been in an accident, lost a loved one, or been the victim of a crime. We rarely choose to put ourselves into these situations, but we, as officers, have a duty and obligation to serve the public and protect. The outcome of those contacts may not always be what the citizen wants. Sometimes a citizen gets a ticket, sometimes citizens go to jail, sometimes de-escalation attempts fail, and a use of force is necessary. Police work is not always fun or pretty, but the outcome is not solely determined by the officer involved, rather, the outcome is determined by all circumstances presented. On many occasions, I've heard the governing body say that we need to focus our efforts on what is best for Topeka. With that said, there may be a need for police reform in other agencies across the country, but please don't judge us by the events that occur elsewhere. The men and women of the Topeka Police Department are true professionals. TPD is a first-class department that is leaps and bounds ahead of most agencies across our nation. Our officers, policies, and procedures, and training staff are second to none, and we strive to do everything possible to protect the citizens of this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is John Culver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the governing body, and city staff. My name is John Culver, and I'm the president of Topeka Fraternal, let me try that again, Topeka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Three. Thank you for your opportunity to appear this evening, and I would echo the remarks just made by Chief Steward Blasingame. As you may or may not know, the FOP currently represents over five hundred, five hundred members in Shawnee County. These men and women, whether active or retired, have committed their lives to making Topeka a better place and a safer community. This union has had some members that have made the ultimate sacrifice. Historically, the city and the FOP have enjoyed a professional and productive relationship. While from time to time, differences of opinion may exist, our two organizations have worked to develop policies and procedures, addressing items such as training, supervision, community oversight, accountability, accountability, and transparency. The FOP looks to continue the positive relationship with the city, we welcome the opportunity to be involved in future discussions, with the goal of providing exceptional public safety services, and taking leadership roles in building community partnerships. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Robert Lynn. Glenda, oh, Glenda DuBois, I'm so sorry, yes.
He's coming up.
Uh, Glenda's first, Glenda DuBois?
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, for the opportunity to address you. I really want to, um, thank you on behalf of the, um...
Glenda?
...in a turn for peace and justice, and the mainstream voices of faith, who's primarily really to lift up voices and support, um, peace and justice in Topeka. We most definitely, um, are dedicated to promoting this conversation and other conversations between our Topeka community and our law enforcement entities. We also concur, I'm sorry, let me do this. We also concur with Chief, I'm sorry, we also concur with Chief Conklin, that there is always a need and desire for, for, um, further dialogue about change. We only ask that you will, that you will consider the recommendations that have been made, to evaluate, uh, current practices and ways that they can be enhanced, that would actually bring better, um, improve the relationships here in Topeka. And the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice really wants to be a part of that conversation, that's our primary goal and our role, is to really, um, to support those conversations, and ask that we continue to be at the table, as we look at what's really best for Topeka going forward.
Thank you for your comments, Glenda. Next person signed up to speak is Robert Lynn.
Madam Mayor, council members, um, I first want to just say that my, uh, my remarks are not going to be really related to racism, as long as there will be humans, there will be racism, as long as, uh, cops are humans, we'll have racist cops. Plain and simple. We, obviously, we need to minimize that, we need to work on that, but, earlier today, Madam Mayor, you sat before cameras and said that the issue, or at least paraphrasing, you said that the issue of police brutality, uh, that seems to have defined the nation recently, is largely not happening here in Topeka. You also said that Topeka was not defunding our police department. While that may technically be true, the action items in the policing recommendations do very little to support the officers themselves. In fact, several of the action items have a very real potential to put officers' lives, and the lives of whom they are charged to serve, in very great, at great risk. I'm just going to go down the list real quick. No-knock warrants. Sometimes, advance notice of the presence of law enforcement is enough to cause a suspect to take actions that could lead to the loss of life. Chokeholds and strangleholds. Sometimes, a chokehold or a stranglehold is the only way to subdue a suspect without acute deadly force. It has been abused, it has been misused by some to deadly effect. Perhaps more training is needed, but an all-out ban, again, I believe, puts people's lives at risk. Requiring a warning before shooting. Frankly, that's just dumb. Um, the badge, the uniform, the car, the lights, the gun, those are warnings. This one has a lot more nuance to it, and it's very hard for a lot of people to understand. Never shoot a person who is running away. Where the average citizen sees a suspect running away, a law enforcement officer has to consider where this suspect is running to. I suspect that if an officer had the opportunity to dispatch a known deadly suspect, but couldn't because that person was running away, and then that deadly, deadly suspect became an immediate threat to you or your loved ones, you'd quite quickly change your position. Warrior-style training. I'm not really sure what that means, but I can say that when you are in need of protection, when I'm in need of protection, we want warriors. We want people who will do nothing, well, I'm sorry, will, will do everything to protect and serve us in that moment of need. I am part-owner of an ammunition company, and with that, I interact with all sorts of law enforcement officers, police officers, deputies, sheriffs, US marshals, you name it. I've spoken with several of them regarding the policing recommendations, and every single one of them has said some version of, they clearly had no law enforcement insight into this whatsoever. I don't know if this is true, I do see a law enforcement officer up there today, tonight, but I would encourage this body to aggressively seek the opinions and advice of active, experienced officers at every single stage. To exclude them in the process would be, at best, a misstep, at worst, murderous. Lastly, uh, Madam Mayor, I, I'm not somebody who likes to hurt people's feelings, but you said today, and I watched it no less than five times to make sure I got it right, that until Friday, you were unaware that Black Lives Matter has, at a national level, called for violence against law enforcement officers. Until today, I had no profound opinion of you one way or the other, I didn't like or dislike you particularly, and, and I'm not saying that as an offense, it's just...
Sir, at this point in time, one of the, uh, the agreements this evening was that your comments were to be general, so if you would like to make general remarks, you're more than welcome to do so.
All right. If anybody at this stage has no knowledge that BLM, as in, at the national level, has made threats against law enforcement, they do not need to be in elective office, period.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up is Tiffany Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Jones, I am a citizen of Topeka, Kansas, I'm, for the most part, born and raised, and lived in Topeka all of my life, except for a period of about fifteen years, where my profession took me out of the city, but not the state. In that time that took me out professionally, I was law enforcement adjacent, so I'm going to do a quick anecdote about some experiences I've had with law enforcement, professionally and personally. Personally, as a little girl, I was stopped by police, a police officer, a white police officer, walking home from Chase Middle School, and told that I needed to be on a sidewalk. So, the street is barren, no traffic, just me and this officer. The catch to that is there was literally no sidewalk to walk on. Fast forward to another experience where I called the police, because my dog had been attacked in my backyard by a neighbor. The officers arrived, they were very understanding, because my dog was clearly attacked and bleeding, until they went to the neighbor's house, and in my black neighborhood, they discovered that my neighbor was white. And then, the officer put his hand on his weapon, and talking to me, and suddenly, my job, what I was doing hadn't changed, but I'm now a threat to him because the neighbor was white. I was stopped several times professionally, where I am doing something wrong, and those two, I'd done nothing wrong. But at that time, I'm law enforcement adjacent, because what took me away was I was a parole officer. And so, law enforcement adjacent gave me the opportunity to be close enough to the brotherhood, that although in those instances, I actually was doing something wrong, I was given a pass because I was family enough. And I say that because I came here, basically, to get a good seat, I didn't really want to speak, but I did want to see it. So, as people have talked, I jotted down a few things, and those scenarios lead to, one of the things I want to talk about, is that there is bias, where I think there needs to be more diversity and inclusion training for the police. Because, as the last speaker just said, people are human, we're going to have our biases, I have them, we all do. It's not that first thought that matters, it's the very next thought. How quickly can you get that away, and then do your job professionally? And there are just some people that are on the force that can't do that, and they need to be weaned out of the force. Several years ago, the police force asked citizens to come and talk about how do they do recruitment. I gave several suggestions in that meeting that were not followed up on. One of the more important ones was, I think, police officers need to live within the community, within the city limits, um, and the relationship between black people and police doesn't need to be adversarial. Um, I think that we are setting this up of the dichotomy that you can't be one or both. I would agree with Reverend Frazier, we need more diversity within the force. I think groups need to be advocating without for change, but real change comes within, and with numbers. More people of color, more women, more LGBTQIA people, that's how we will really dissolve the systemic racism within the force, and stop the brutality, because if your natural instinct and bias won't let you let go of, "I'm more of a threat than a white counterpart," then there still will always be the problem, and we need to really look at diversity, inclusion, and recruitment, a serious recruitment, to get numbers of diversity up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Thomas Muthur.
Hello again. First, I want to make it clear, I'm not here to bash the police, I just would like to make them better. What happened again, as you're all aware, another unarmed black man was shot in the back, for what certainly seems to have been no sane reason. I usually don't have the stomach to watch such videos, but I happened to catch this one. The fact that the man's children had ringside seats for this horror show, while only adds to the horror and the trauma that will live with these kids for the rest of their lives. So, yet again, we have a manifest demonstration of the need for police reform. Of course, it didn't happen here, but it has happened here in the past. Reform, or better yet, transformation, is needed not just in Wisconsin or Minneapolis, but across this country, including here. I could give you a list of some of the more pressing areas in need of change, but there have been many studies on this issue, stretching back to at least the nineteen twenties, most recently under the Obama administration, that propose fairly extensive changes, studies that have taken up residence in file cabinets or dusty corners of the internet, ignored and forgotten. I would suggest resurrecting these files, for the wisdom that they contain. I wish to highlight one specific problem that lies at the heart of some of the police misconduct that we've seen that have galvanized protests across the nation. That problem, and please forgive me if I mispronounce it, is machismo. Am I right there?
Machismo.
Huh?
Machismo.
Machismo, okay. Close. In my opinion, this trait has no place in an organization dedicated to the protection of and service to the community. Unfortunately, this problem is not easily eradicated. By its nature, policing seems to attract two types, those that truly wish to serve their community, and those that are attracted to the idea of wielding power. I've had interactions with police of both types over the years, but I'll mention one instance I happened to observe just a few years ago. In the library one day, a police officer was chatting pleasantly, doing nothing wrong with a patron, when all of a sudden, a young man, sitting about thirty feet away, jumped up, rushed over to the policeman, and said, "You're threatening me." The officer responded by thrusting out his chest, and saying, "No, I wasn't," in a defensive, irritated tone. The results were predictable, soon the young man was face-down on the floor and in handcuffs. What would have happened if instead, the officer had responded with, "Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be?" Impossible to know for sure, but almost certainly, the results would have been, worked out far better. So, how to remove such attitudes? It's nothing that will happen by a stroke of a pen or a single vote of this council, it's something that will take time, but it will only change if the problem is first acknowledged. Certainly, a greater professionalism of the force with considerable higher pay would help, as it would attract many more candidates, presumably including those more of the service-minded types. This would include much more training and instruction, and weeding out. For example, in some European countries, um, police are required to take two years of training before they're certified as police officers. That would mean higher taxes, but I, for one, would happily comply with the increase for such a worthy cause. Perfect timing.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Robert Trup Jr. The other two individuals are not here.
Hello. My name is Robert Trup Jr., born and raised in Topeka, and I'm here to, after listening to a lot of people talk, uh, there's a lot of things going through my mind that I'd like to speak on, and I know I don't have the time, so I'm gonna start backwards. One of the things I would really like to see is, I've lived in the, my house that I've lived in for over thirty years, and basically, in summertime more so, I hear gunshots all the time. But the thing I notice with the gunshots is there's no police response. But the thing I notice with the gunshots is there's no police response. And I can even give you an incident where a person stood in the alley and fired eight or 10 times through a house and killed a young boy that was in the house, and no police responded until, from my knowledge, the people that were in the house called the police. Now, if I can hear police shots all the time, how come the police don't hear them and respond to them by coming to that area and trying to find out what the shooting is? Also, last night, I heard three shots. No police response. And that's the thing I've always looked at. To me, people always say they want police to do this and do that, and I do too, and that's why I wonder why certain things aren't dealt with and looked at. And to go back to the other things that I like to talk about, I also noticed that they talk about fake news and so forth and so on, but they never talk about inaccurate news. All the things I've heard talked about, they didn't give any details. Like, when they talk about policemen are being shot and killed, who's shooting and killing them? Black people or white people? They never bring up those details. And all the other things they talk about, they don't bring up those details. When they talk about different things, tell me who's doing it and how they're doing it. When -- how many times do they shoot and kill an unarmed white man running away? And et cetera, et cetera. Those things are never talked about. Just like they keep talking about Black Lives Matter, how come nobody mentions the Ku Klux Klan, the neo-Nazis, the skinheads? They even want to do away with the country and the government. But when Black Lives Matter says something, oh, so terrible. But neo-Nazis, Ku Klux Klan, skinheads, and all these other groups, you never hear anybody say how terrible the things they say are. And that's the thing I look at, and just like the lady talked about incidents with the police, I remember as a young man, I should say, a young boy, five years old, in the alley with my three-year-old brother, and a police officer running up, pulling his gun on my three-year-old brother who was on a tricycle and saying that a tricycle had been stowed in the neighborhood, and my mother running out of the house screaming, "Don't shoot him." And I've gone through different incidents as years have gone on with the police, and I always look at the fact that if they were trained differently, and if they had to deal with how black people live differently than white people live and the things we go through, because also, like, with stress. I'm under stress every day when I go somewhere, especially with these new gun laws where people can carry guns. I always wonder if they're going to pull the gun on me because I'm black and think I've done something and I need to be taken care of. So those are the things I'd like people to look at and think about when they think about dealing with the different things of Black Lives Matter and Ku Klux Klan and et cetera, et cetera, white and black in this country. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is John Nave, and John was online. Is he gone?
It looks like he may have left.
Okay. Then the next person is Robert Redler.
Hello. My name is Robert Redler. I'm a semi-retired attorney living here in Topeka. I thank you for staying awake all these hours with all these talks. When reviewing the Human Relations Commission's report and their proposed changes, each of the proposed limitations on the police should be subject to three questions. The first two are, one, will the proposed change or limitation make Topeka's more safe or less safe? The second question, will the proposed change provide an actual benefit to law-abiding citizens of Topeka? Now, the commission says in their report that their goal is to bring cooperation together among community members, among Topeka's. But if that's the case, safety has to come first. If people do not live in a safe environment, there is not going to be cooperation. And the question is then, who is it that they're trying to bring together? Is it the law-abiding citizens and the criminals? No, that would be absurd. There are -- the issue then is, do law-abiding citizens need to see the police handcuffed effectively by the restrictions and limitations that are proposed by the commission? Now, there are legitimate complaints and concerns about the police in some places at some times, and they basically boil down to two categories. The first is discrimination. The second is abuse of power. If there's an abuse of power by an officer, and that applies to all races, he should be weeded out without hamstringing the rest of his department with rules as proposed by the commission. If the abuse of power is discriminatory, that's another matter, but it goes back to the first legitimate complaint: discrimination. Now, discrimination, of course, is despicable, but you can't hide behind discrimination to enable criminal activity. Now, using -- this brings to the third criteria that should be used to judge any of the proposed changes, and that is, will it reduce discrimination? If any of the proposed limitations do not reduce limitations, do not make things more safe for people, then they should be set aside. So, using the commission's report and drawing from that, if, as an example, there's an active shooter at one of your child's children's schools, and the police arrive and the shooter starts running, gun in hand, is it discriminatory to shoot at him? Is it discriminatory, or will it make people safer to let him go because they're not supposed to shoot at somebody that's fleeing and let him go to the next scene? If your spouse, your husband, your wife, is mugged, beaten, thrown on the ground, has a wallet taken away, and the shooter takes out -- the mug, it takes out a gun, points it at his head or her head, puts his finger on the trigger, and an officer sees that arriving at the scene, should the officer be required to first give a warning? Is that discriminatory to fail to give a warning? No. My proposal is that the proposals offered by the commission virtually will not take into account any of those three criteria, and those three criteria should be applied to each one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Mr. Myron Holter. He's not here. And then, Mr. John Campos. And he's not here either. All right. So at this point in time, we have heard all of the comments in this evening, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening, and I appreciate everybody's comments.